All right, welcome back. Good evening, once again. We did this about a half hour ago, but I don't know if the cameras got it, so we'll do it once more. To the January 8th meeting of the Grafton Board of Selectmen. First item on our agenda is announcements. And I don't think I have any, right? All right, good. So moving right on, we have on our schedule Shop Grafton Prize Drying. John Allen, EDC.
Yes.
Why don't you come on up? And then we can just explain to people what we're doing right now. So Shop Grafton was a promotion that the EDC had came up where they were doing it all through December. And if you went to all the local businesses, you get a stamp. And that's what we're drawing today, right?
Yes. Can we play the video? So that way those that don't know get more detailed insight.
So we had some local list of coverage for this.
Oh, nice.
... Cyber Monday, money Grafton town leaders say more than one day is needed to support local businesses. The town says shopping local helps create jobs and helps the economy. Brittany Schaefer joins us now with more. Brittany?
Bolivia, the town's Economic Development Commission started a campaign over the weekend. Shoppers are given a punch card, and if they enter 10 stores, they could be entered to win prizes like an iPad.
Thank you so much for shopping local.
It was a busy small business Saturday in Grafton.
It was our best day ever.
We couldn't have asked for a better day. It exceeded all of my expectations.
But with the battle of big box stores for Black Friday and online shopping on Cyber Monday, the town wanted to keep consumers local this holiday season. It's why Grafton's Economic Development Commission has created the Shop Grafton MA campaign.
People are busy, and a single day such as shop small business Saturday isn't sufficient. So in Grafton, we decided to create shop small business season, which is from November 23rd to December 24th.
Residents and people are able to come to local businesses, get a card, get it stamped, buy the local business, and be entered into a prize.
More than 65 businesses are participating, including bakery and dog boutique Quite Fetching. Owner Emily Oskalillo says shopping local is an experience unlike any other.
We can't compete with Black Friday Amazon, you know, but what we can do is remember Mocha when she comes in for her sweater and her cheesecake. That personal touch that you're just not going to find somewhere else. We are on the list of extinction in any help we can get to keep our business going, to help the community. It's kind of just a circle.
Grafton store owners started handing out the punch cards this weekend and say it was a success.
The incentive with the cards and to know where people are going and shopping local, it was wonderful.
When the town's behind you, it's a great thing.
The town says they hope this campaign will be an annual event. Brittany Schaefer, what's our news tonight?
There is a... You did your own shoot of this as well that they picked up. You don't want to show that one, correct, or do you?
You guys are here. Do you guys want to see another video about shop grafting? Or? We do have a loaded agenda.
That answered that. What I'd like to do is tell you about shop grafting and why it's important. We've all been to communities, or at least I've been to communities, where you drive through the town, and there's store after store, and they're closed, they're boarded up. Those aren't very fun or attractive communities. The communities that are fun and attractive and vibrant are the ones with restaurants, shops, and stores. And it really adds to the quality of life for the community. It gives you a place to go hang out, to go meet a friend. It gives you a place to buy something special that you're not going to find for that. You could buy something special for that person that you care very much about. The shop owners were absolutely thrilled with the support, the fact that we were helping them sell and contribute to our community, because they're the ones that fund the basketball and fund the soccer. They're the ones that make the donations to the high school. So they're contributing to our community, and it was a great opportunity to work with the EDC to help them as well. I should point out that the logo that we used for the shop graft was designed by Grafton High School students. There was a competition, and people got to vote on it. So we included the entire community. What we have is three prizes, and the three prizes are an Apple iPad, Apple Airbuds, and a Visa gift card. And what I'd like to do is to ask somebody to come up and draw the winner for the Visa gift card. What we'll do is we'll go from the smallest prize to the biggest prize.
I don't have the gift card. I just have the Airbuds.
Cynthia Dunlop.
Okay. Cynthia, what we're going to do is for the winners, we'll have them... I have their telephone number. I'll reach out to them. So she got the Visa gift card.
All right. That's a lot of fun. How many of those cards did you receive, John?
We got about 100 back.
Oh, wow.
But we passed out about 7,000. So I think it's a lot of those things where you go, you buy something, and mail in the rebate thing.
Yeah.
And a lot of people simply didn't give us the back.
Well, we'll focus on that first number. 100 back is pretty good.
So we have two more to do, correct?
Yes, we do. Excuse me. You just walked in. Could you come up here and draw that?
You've been volunteered.
This is for the Apple AirPods. Frank Labarroti.
Hey, Frank.
Good for you, Frank.
And for the grand prize, the Apple iPad. Who would like to do this wrong?
Thank you, sir.
Jeez.
You want it open?
Yeah. It's hot in here.
I can turn on the AC.
Albert LaRazzo.
Do that, too.
John, and to all of the EDC, good job, great work. That was a great success for the town, and keep coming up with these great...
I have more.
Oh, you have more?
I have more.
Go ahead.
On January 31st at 7:00 PM here in this room, we're going to be hosting a seminar on the One Page Business Plan. It will help people start a business, buy a business, grow a business, and sell a business. Bill Belichick doesn't go into a game without a written business plan. Why is it that people are making life decisions without a written plan? We encourage you to come, learn how to write a one-page business plan, and the key thing is they tell you people are 30% more successful if they put in writing. An idea and a concept that's not in writing doesn't get you as far as it does in writing. That's on January 31st at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, John. That was John. All right. We have actually two poll petitions, so we've got to open up a public hearing.
First, I'm going to read the legal notice.
Oh, yeah. Go ahead.
Do you want them one at a time, I would imagine?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid Plan Number 23772714 for the installation of concrete-encased conduit and manholes and other such sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by the petitioner along and across the following public way or ways. Westborough Road, approximately zero feet east of the center line of the intersection of Waterville Street and continuing approximately 8,000 feet in the east direction. National Grid to install approximately 8,000 feet of new 9x5 concrete-encased conduit bank and 19 new manholes along Westborough Road within the public right-of-way. Waterville Street, approximately zero feet south of the center line of the intersection of Westborough Road and continually approximately 1,700 feet in the south direction. National Grid to install approximately 1,700 feet of new 9x5 concrete-encased conduit and five new manholes within the public row on Waterville Street. Willard Street, approximately zero feet south of the center of the intersection of Willard Street and continually approximately 1,150 feet in the south direction. National Grid to install approximately 1,150 feet of new 9x5 and 2x5 concrete-encased conduit and three new manholes on Willard Street. Pine Street, approximately zero feet north of the center line of the intersection of Westborough Road and continually approximately 170 feet in the north direction. National Grid to install approximately 170 feet of new 2x5 concrete-encased conduit within the public right-of-way on Pine Street. The public hearing will take place in Conference Room A, Grafton Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. on Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. The selectmen's meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to may attend the Grafton Board of Selectmen."
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing done. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
There should be someone from National Grid here.
Come on up, guys.
So this is just why they're coming up, has been in a long planning stage, and the amount of electricity they're going to put up that's going to feed, hopefully, that finish of the Science Park, Tufts, crates, redundancy, and some backup, has been planned for at least two and a half years. They've gone through permitting for conservation, and the biggest thing we need to do is coordinate this project with the sewer line project that'll go in the road on one side or the other of these concrete encasements for this... What is it, 17 kilovolts or 1,700 kilovolts?
It's a new 15,000 kilovolt circuit. Or it's a new 15,000 KV substation, so all the circuits coming out will be at that voltage level.
And that new substation's on the right on Waterville as you're going towards Tufts?
Yep.
Just so people can get their bearings.
It's just south of the intersection of where Westborough Road becomes Waterville Street. So it's just south of there, probably about maybe 8,000 feet, somewhere in that range.
And what will this do for any potential industrial manufacturers or big businesses that want to come to this area for their electrical needs?
So essentially, this plan... So it does serve two purposes. So it serves the purpose of additional load for support near Tufts in that area for the new science units coming up. There's going to be, I think there's five or six planned circuits to come out of this. So this is going to result in a considerable offload from the existing circuits. So you're going to have a fair amount of more load that can come in for new businesses. So if you have a new large industrial customer come in, or even if you have a large residential growth, you can support either one, because you're going to have an additional, you know, I think it's like I said, five or six circuits coming out of the substation, which is a fair amount more load that you can now carry throughout the entire, you know, infrastructure of North Grafton.
And how long will this project take?
So I believe that the construction, it depends. So it's not going to be a very short process, unfortunately, because I talked to the town planner, and, you know, the construction duration is extended because they want to go through a season. Now, the roads aren't going to be torn up for two years. That's not what I'm saying. So what's going to happen is they'll probably take, being safe, probably six months to a year for the construction, you know, because it's roughly two and a half miles of new duck bank putting in, so it's a fairly substantial amount. Once that's done, I forget his name, but the town planner, basically, he wanted us to sit through one cycle. So what do you mean, like it's going to sit through one winter cycle for freeze and thaw, and then National Grid will come out, and they'll basically resurface the road that they damaged or fix any issues at that point. And after that point, the project would be considered complete.
Just to point of clarification, it's probably Brian Ciszeko, the planner versus the town.
Yes, it was Brian.
The engineer versus the town.
Sorry, that's what I meant, engineer.
But the regs call for a settlement to happen before you do the final code of all anyway, so.
Yeah. So that's, like, if I have to give you construction duration, that extends it because of there. But realistically, the road's not going to be torn up that entire time, so it's going to be, they'll do the patch, and then they'll come back the next year and they'll fix it.
How deep is the trench? How deep are you going to go?
So the standard cover over the utilities that National Grid's going to put is 30 inches. So the trenches will usually be in the, you know, on the safe side, four feet max in that range.
And you just backfill with material that's there, or do you?
Yeah, so when they, so after they dig it, they'll do, basically, they'll do a crushed stone layer for stability and drainage. And after they put everything in, they do a backfill with loom that's been, you know, they have to use specific loom.
Yeah, it's specs for whatever the Mass DOT says you do.
Yeah, it's whatever can be approved for use under roads, so it's not going to be... The loom has to be approved before they put it back in.
It's not going to be loom.
It's not going to be sand.
Not sand, sorry.
But you know, I asked, Kevin Chauncey's been great to work with through this whole thing. He's our government rep for grid. The value of that substation is significant, the value of this entire project, not to pin you down, but do you know what those numbers look like for grid in terms of its investment?
Grid's investment, so the substation part is not part of my area. I was involved in the duck bank design. National Grid's investment in this project is substantial in the $5 million range for just the duck bank installation.
All that goes to the state for valuation purposes for us, for taxation, so that's kind of, you can't consider a true all-new growth, but that'll be that portion, and then the substation will be another portion. But it's not us that determines that value. It's the state, but it's based on the investment. So not only do we get the benefit of a new road coordinated with the sewer line and increased capacity for electricity for new businesses or redundancy purposes, you also get some kicker value in terms of investment for new growth.
After tonight, what do you have left to do in the process to be ready for construction?
To be honest with you, the design process is completed. I think, I believe the scheduling for the project is only awaiting the approval of this petition. The only thing that may be outstanding on top of that is possibly a state permit, but I believe they've gone through that.
So you'll put the project out to bid, or you guys do it internally?
I can't honestly answer that. I can't answer that question. I don't know what their plan was, because I know when I originally talked to them, they had talked about either possibly doing it internal. I don't know if the determination has been made since then. Well, it has been made, but I just, I'm not aware of what decision they made.
Tim, do you know how long it's going to be, traffic will be affected on that road?
Well, we will have to have flow for, especially, school buses and everything else, but detours will have to be planned through the police department. All that stuff will take place that's not normal protocol, but they get out there early and they're done by 3:00 normally.
Yes.
It might be night work, too, depending on some portions of the project.
Yeah, they would make plans, because I, not to, but like, so oftentimes in this, like, you know, they'll make stipulations where the work can only be during off-hours or certain hours if it's preferable. So, you know, if the town prefers, or if there's an issue of traffic, you know, they can always adjust the work schedule to whatever suits the town best, because it's, you know, it is a state road, so it can be subject to heavier traffic at times. So if it becomes an issue, they can adjust accordingly if needed.
We'll have to do a lot of, you know, signage in this area before it starts to give people who go to the train station, everything, or go to Tufts, adequate notice when it's happening. So we'll plan that stuff out as well. And you guys have a memo that Brian and Paul had written relative to the coordination of the other utility that's going there. So that's, when you make, if and when you make the motion to grant them to allow to put this duck bank in, it has to be, and I know they'll coordinate with us anyways, but it's just got to be contingent on that coordination, because that, I can't have that road open twice within a short period of time, so I have to get that sewer project that we just approved for the grant for in coordination with this.
I mean, other projects, probably three or four weeks' worth of work.
I don't know. Paul, would you know the answer to that for that? I think it's longer.
It depends on the, you know, without doing the borings, which are scheduled for two weeks.
You don't know what they're going to hit, yeah.
Anybody else here have any comments? Anyone from the public wish to comment on this?
Move to close the public hearing.
Oh, wait, you have a hand in the basket.
Oh, come on up, sir. If you just want to stand right over there at the podium or have a seat and just state your name again, whatever makes you comfortable.
Tim Mack in 76 Waterville. What's the benefit to the neighborhood? Do we get power underground for us, or is still going to be power on the poles?
So like, according to, one of the most obvious benefits is you will get, you know, there are some rough patches in the road. National Grid will end up having to repave a substantial portion of the road for you guys. There's the added benefit of the underground power is going to be primary wire, which isn't suitable for feeding houses, because you can't...
Okay, so all the power's going someplace else?
The power is, it's being directed to the area around. So it's, what's happening is it's going to come out of the substation underground, and it's going to go to different areas of the town around North Grafton. So what you're going to get is this prevents the need, it allows more load to be served to the existing houses or businesses in the area. But you're also going to see is there's going to be less roadside pole constructions, so you'll get shorter poles roadside. You won't have poles with too many wires hanging off of them, so instead of having two or three circuits on some of these poles, you're going to end up with only one.
Okay.
So it's going to, it results in, you know, you won't have a huge visual impact of seeing, you know, new gigantic poles going in in the area with tons of wires on them. So you'll see a reduced visual impact in that way, as well as the new road, and more load can be served.
But our houses will not get underground power, right? They'll still come from a pole?
Yes, at that time, yeah.
And one comment on fixing the road. I don't care if you fix it. It will slow the traffic down on Waterville Street. So I'd much rather see slow traffic on Waterville Street than a nice, smooth road. Thank you.
All right, anybody else?
Move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right.
There's a second one.
There's a second one, yeah.
Do you want to do them one at a time, or?
Yeah, you do, yeah. Go up and then I'll do the second one.
All right, go ahead.
All right, I move the board approve the poll petition for Westborough Road, including Waterville Street, Willard Street, and Pine Street as presented by National Grid.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. Discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
All right, I'll read the next legal notice. This one's a little shorter than the last one. "The Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on the request of National Grid Plan Number 23772714 to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Pine Street, install one SO pole on Pine Street beginning at the point approximately zero feet north of the center line of the intersection of Westborough Road and continually approximately 170 feet in the north direction. National Grid to install a new intermediate pole 1-5 on Pine Street for new National Grid conduit bank and lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections with such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes. The public hearing will take place in Conference Room A, Grafton Municipal Center, 30 Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. on Tuesday, January 8th, 2019. The selectmen's meeting begins at 7:00 PM. The purpose of this hearing is to provide an opportunity for public comment. Anyone wishing to may attend the Grafton Board of Selectmen."
Motion open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion made and seconded to open the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So now we have this one for Pine Street.
Yeah. I mean, if you had the image of it, this one's just, essentially, it's, I think it's like 170, 200 feet of new conduit coming off from manhole along Westborough Road to pick up load. It's basically the new pole set so that they can get the wires from underground to overhead. So the purpose of this one, it's basically, it's just to tap off Westborough Road to pick up some additional load, or to run a new...
And this will be done in...
Yeah, it's part of the original, the other one, yes.
All right. Anybody have any comments, questions? Anybody from the public here to speak on this public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing. Second.
Motion made and seconded to close the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to accept the poll position, or poll petition by National Grid at Pine Street.
Can you just modify that a bit, if you would? Just relative to the conditional cooperation with the other public works projects that have to go on in the area, coordination with our DPW department. They will anyway, but I just wanted to be in the record that it's contingent upon us having that coordinated effort.
Yeah, so tomorrow morning, I'll actually, I'll talk to our counterparts at National Grid, and I'll discuss with them that you guys want that included to make sure that we reinforce that, that's what you have to do.
Well, it'd be cheaper for you, it'd be cheaper for us if we don't dig it twice.
And it makes sense. I certainly understand that.
How is that coordination going to happen, though? Because this is, you know, these aren't small pipes that are going in. I mean, I don't know what the diameter is of the conduit that's going to carry.
So it varies depending on situation, because, so south on like Waterville Street, there's a lot of existing utilities in that area. As you get further north, like along Westborough Road, it's basically, there's nothing there. So I believe that's where you're looking to put in the sewer. So at the moment, the way we plan it is, because when we talk to the engineer, they're looking crown-to-curb restoration. Our trench is typically 36 inches wide, so roughly three feet. We're already repaving 10 feet of road, so, you know, you're looking at maybe another two, three feet onto the trench to get everyone in there, because we have to stay at least 18 inches away from other utilities underground.
So the trench will be three feet wide. It's going to be four feet deep, so the conduit will...
It takes up the majority of that.
It does.
Yeah.
Well, they're concrete encased, are they not?
Yeah, so what you end up with is your concrete encasement is roughly three inches on each side, and you have, it's stacked, so it's three on top of three on top of three. So you have 15 inches plus three, and there's another four and a half inches between them, so you end up with roughly, you know, 28, 29, 30 inches on the duck bank, so it takes up the majority of that trench that we...
So in that pipe is sitting in the trench, there's only three inches on each side of it?
Roughly, yeah.
So how do you compact that?
The... No, what do you mean? So like, when they do the, when they do the backfill, or?
It's all, those pipes are inside a concrete box.
I know, but there's going to be a three-foot trench, and then the box is inside of it. How do you get down inside those areas to compact?
I don't do the construction, but I know they can't.
Well, you can, but you can't use gravel to do it.
No, the gravel, the gravel goes underneath it to give them a level surface for drainage. The backfill goes around on top of the duck bank. They don't use gravel to do any backfill.
I'm just worried about settlement. We have a lot of utility companies that come to town, gas companies the worst, and they'll do some work, and then they'll just throw some dirt in a patch, and then it'll settle, and they'll come and put a patch on top of that, and then that'll settle, and then they never come back.
So what's...
So it, you know, on a perfectly good road.
Yeah. So what's supposed to happen here, and that's what, the end, that's what we discussed with engineers, they're supposed to basically let it settle.
Yeah.
And come back and fix it. The whole, like, they're going to do...
It's just a lousy way to do it. There's other ways to do it. You guys should look at that. I know you're not involved in construction, because there's no reason to have to go through that process for the community, people driving on those roads, to drive over a settled road, waiting for it to finish settling and settle this much, and then come back and put another patch on it. It's just, it's a terrible way to do it.
That's not, he didn't ask us to do that, so, because he wants, he wants them to patch, and then they'll come back and redo everything after it settles.
Right, but it'll be a smooth surface when you're on it. And if it settles, they come back, they tear out that top three inches.
Yeah, he's, Brian was saying, like, you know, he doesn't want us to let it settle and the patch will settle pavement. That's not what he, he wasn't, basically said, we're not going to let you do that. So I think he's trying to prevent what you're talking about. I, again, that's the thing, so I can go talk to them and say, you have these concerns, and make sure they're addressed, because obviously, they'll have to, they'll have to talk to you while they're doing this, so they can't just say, you know...
They should be using flowable fill up, yeah. That's, that's the way you get 100% compaction, all the voids are filled, and you don't have They should be using flowable fill up there. That, that's the way you get a hundred percent compaction, all the voids are filled and you don't have that settlement. But that wasn't my real question.
No, but so when they do it, the trench is three feet wide, that hole to the top of the duct bank itself gets filled with concrete. There's no edges on it. They're not forming inside the trench, the trench is the form. So when they, when they fill that, that part with concrete, it goes sidewall.
Oh, they're just burying it in concrete. Oh, okay. I thought it was encased in a concrete structure.
Well, it is.
Well, I know, but it's being, it's poured in place. It's not, it's not.
They're not, they're not making a form in that trench. The trench is the form.
Oh, okay.
I thought it was concrete pipe that you were running them.
Oh.
Okay, you're just burying in concrete.
Okay. Now I see, now I see why you're.
So, so what, what, how do we coordinate this? When we do the sewer, I don't know what the size, I mean, the diameter of that pipe, it's gotta be significant.
Well, that's, that's only eight inch, but the problem with that is some areas it's fifteen feet deep, so it's.
So how do those two, how do those two projects?
Well, it's gonna be, you know, like Tim said, it's daily coordination with us and their, whoever their engineer is daily, their.
The, the construction screw and the.
You still need to be able to have people pass.
Correct. There's gonna, there's, there's gonna be a lot of, you know.
Yeah.
They're working on the side, we'll, we'll be over here.
Do it all together. I just can't see how that's gonna happen.
And there's a private developer doing some. Well, we, yeah, the private developer piece for that pump station is the third component.
Do you guys do that? Do you do that with other projects? We have uh multiple utilities going in at the same time?
I've done, I've worked on projects like that, but it's never been, if you're digging the sewer fifteen, ten, fifteen feet down, I've never uh gone hand in hand with someone else that deep below us. I've had experience with, we've worked with the communications companies to put something together at the same time we've coordinated stuff like that, but I've never never to that level.
But we're, we're probably thirty-five percent design. Need to do the boring, you've already done borings, I assume, through that whole area.
They did, yeah.
Borrow your boring test. Well, no, because they didn't go the. Oh, we gotta go deeper than they went. Right, they just. So at least we can, yeah, we have to do that anyway, so when we go out to bid for the spring for the project, that's when, you know, depending on where we have to be, we're probably a thousand feet away from where you'll start anyways, so that, that'll be the trick coordinating at that lowest point.
I tell you what, I'm gonna withdraw my motion, and why don't you just tell me what you want me to move?
Well, whatever, whatever you started with, um, but make it conditional upon coordination with other public works projects. It's in private, because we have the private part of that as well. Well, the private can't do it without our consent anyway, so I'm not, I'm not too worried. You're right, but I don't.
Basically, we want all three of these projects that are to be ongoing on Westboro Road, to have some type of coordination, so we're not, whatever plans were coming up for the sewer, we're not stepping on your toes and you're not gonna put something above where we were gonna dig previously. Okay, so I guess my motion to is to accept the petition under the guidance of our D P W department and engineering. So basically what I'm saying is, I, I move that we accept this, but you gotta go through Brian and Paul. And so make sure all these things are coordinated appropriately.
I guess I'll second that.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, moving on, we have a class two license hearing. The class two, is that what it's called?
Yes.
Secondhand motor vehicle.
Secondhand motor vehicle license. How you doing?
Good morning.
You're uh Luis Zafantes?
It's great.
And uh you, you're renting at, or own two thirteen, what's his street? Is there a legal notice? Is this a public hearing?
No.
Oh, just go, okay. Um, why don't you tell us a little bit about yourself and what you're trying to do and the business that you're trying to run?
So I'm actually moving my business. We've been in business for about a year. We started out in uh Worcester at the beginning of two thousand and eighteen. We were on Route twenty, Worcester. We had been looking for a new location for, for a while because we had to share the, the building with a, with a body shop, the Centis Auto Collision, which is, it's on Route twenty. Uh, and this opportunity opened up. We really liked the location, we liked the traffic, and well, we're, we're very excited.
So um will you do repairs as well as sales?
Mm-hmm, and that's another, one of the main reasons we wanted to expand, because we could only do sales at the other location because of the, uh because of the space that we had, and now we're going to be doing both service and, and sales.
Tim, help me out with this. I, wasn't there somebody, after Roger closed down, didn't?
It was supposed to be a dentist's office. There was somebody else repairing in there.
In twenty seventeen, the license was transferred.
To somebody else, that's what I remember, yeah.
Didn't make.
Yes.
Okay.
But then there was supposed to be, there was a dentist's office, it was supposed to go to that, didn't pan out, and now it's, Roger's gonna be taking over, helping with the issues.
Okay.
Great.
Alright, and uh, and like you said, you've, you've sold cars before and you've worked on cars before and you, you know cars and all that.
Mm-hmm, and so far, we've been doing pretty well. Everybody's been happy, so we wanna keep it that way.
And uh, and are you gonna load your lot up with like a million cars over there or?
Uh, well, the license, I think, holds up to uh fifteen or twenty, I don't recall. Uh, in the future, we are gonna try to upgrade it, but we have to come up with a plot plan and make sure uh you guys agree with the amount that we, that, that we're shooting for.
Okay.
Oh, you know what? There was a legal notice. Do you need me to read this legal notice? It was behind in, in my pack.
Yeah, if, if there was a legal notice published in the paper, yes, I thought, I thought.
Sorry, I apologize. We're gonna go back just a second. I get your read again. Legal notice, the Board of Selectmen will hold a public hearing on Tuesday, January eighth, two thousand and nineteen in Conference Room A, Grafton Municipal, Municipal Center thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. to hear citizen comments on the application of Louis de Zafantes of eleven Harrington Farms Way, Shrewsbury, Mass. The application is for a class two license for Venet Auto Sales and Service Incorporated, located at two thirteen Worcester Street, North Grafton. The selectmen's meeting begins at seven P M. Interested citizens are invited to attend this public hearing and offer any written or oral comments. Grafton Board of Selectmen.
Motion to, it's a public hearing?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Public hearing?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to open the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Alright, so basically, you know, the public hearing wasn't open before, now it's open. But I, but everything still stands, everything that we said and asked, and, and we'll, we'll make sure that's part of the record. Is anybody from the public here who cares to speak on this matter?
I just have one more thing.
Keep going, yeah.
Um, it's your opportunity, if you wanna plug your business about what kind of services and.
Oh, we're gonna be doing, uh, we're gonna be doing service, we're gonna be uh tire mounting and balancing. As of the uh fifteenth of this month, we're still waiting on some equipment we transferred from the other location to the new one. Uh, we hit our mechanic gets A S E certified. So far, um, we've only been in business for a year, but all our reviews have been positive, everybody's been happy. We haven't had to, uh, we haven't had any cars returned to us. So we really care about customer service and will hopefully be doing some uh community work. We did it in uh Worcester with a church. We did the service uh for some of their vehicles, and since we're in Grafton, we're probably gonna look for, for maybe another church because of one of our business partners is, uh, is very religious, so we're church oriented. And uh, so yeah, we're pretty excited and if anything you guys need, we're, we're there, so.
Are you doing anything with the building? Is it gonna keep the same facade, same?
Uh, yeah, we're not doing any, anything other than cosmetics.
Roger still owns the building? He's leasing it?
No, uh, the, remember what you said about the dental office? Uh, so the person that, eh, bought that building with the purpose of turning it into a dental practice, and he ended up finding a better uh property or a property that fit his project better, so we're leasing from him.
Great. I guess two recommendations, I'd suggest that you um meet um John Allen, he's our economic development um.
Coordinator.
Coordinator. Um, you're a business, new business in town, we wanna welcome you, want you to know him, and I would uh take some time and go introduce yourself to the Chief of Police, uh Norm Crepo, just when you get a minute, it's nice to, you know, have a face and, and a name and let him know that you're there and if anything comes up down the road, it's, you know, if you need their services, then you'll, you'll have a relationship with them.
Sounds good.
Uh, motion, you already asked if anybody had any.
Yep.
Motion to close the public hearing?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to close the public hearing, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to approve the class two license for uh Venet?
Ben.
Ben, Auto Sales.
Second.
Motion made in seconded to approve the class two license, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Luis.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Alright, we are cruising, guys.
Yeah.
Move to accept the retirement of Joanne Hafte from the Treasury Clerk's Office?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to uh accept the retirement notice of Joanne Hav, Hav, is it Hav, Hafte?
Hafte.
Hafte, effective March first, two thousand and nine. Discussion on the motion?
Um, just that, just wanna recognize her for being here almost thirty years.
Yeah.
Tim can, I guess, talk to it, but she always had a smile and face when you went up to that window. She was taking your money most of the time, but uh she uh, she was a very nice lady and I know she's gonna be sure missed by that office and.
Lot of great customer service skills from her will be lost and we'll, we'll look to use her as a model for that customer service piece. So she, she was great. She is great.
It's a lot of years suspended in one community, almost thirty, or is there gonna be thirty in April? Long time.
Sure was by a month.
Yeah.
Wow, thirty years, that, that is amazing. Uh, anyone else have anything to say? Hearing no, nothing, all of the favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Sorry, I'm a little bit under the weather today. I can't even like.
You're doing fine.
Alright, good, moving on, we have another retirement.
Motion to accept the resignation of Brian Bavosi from the wastewater treatment plant operator and from Station One auxiliary firefighter.
Second.
To send him a letter.
Motion made in seconded.
To your service? Like we usually do.
Yeah.
Craig?
Yes, yeah, send him a letter, thanks for his service.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you to Brian, to Joanne. Alright, you know, Tim, I realize I usually have a copy, paper copy, so that's why I keep going up and down on my thing. Alright, uh, we have appointments for the Board of Selectmen, vote, vote to appoint Diane uh. I, I'm not, I'm gonna butcher that. Rassacot? Rassatot?
Rakkacott.
Ra, Rakkacott.
That's my best guess.
For Together We Can Committee?
She here?
Diane, are you here?
Diane is not here.
Okay.
Move to uh appoint Diane to the Together We Can Committee?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to affirm the appointment of Carrie Ann Cadren to the treatment plant operator?
Second.
Motion made in seconded to affirm the appointment, the town administrator's ap, appointment, uh, discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Move to affirm the appointment of Laura Ellen Cassidy, public safety dispatcher, part-time?
Second.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
And move to affirm the appointment of uh Mike Cadren, the temporary treatment plant operator, part-time?
Second, sorry.
Motion made in seconded, discussion on the motion. Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alright, we are new business. Um, we have basically three committees in. Uh, we wanted to start, since I became chair, I wanted to bring in all the committees and, and bring them in for a touch base meeting, and we've been doing that throughout the year. So we didn't meet in December, I think we only met once, so we have three of them here with us today. So we'll start with uh Together We Can Committee. If you guys are here, you wanna come on up and uh just kinda give us an update where you're at and explain to us who you are and all that fun stuff.
Alright, um Kathy Siedberg, forty-four Countryside Road, and I am representative of Together We Can. And brochures are being passed around as well, some pictures of some of the things that we've done. We have been in existence since nineteen ninety-six. We have been a subcommittee of your great committee, um, the Board of Selectmen. And our goal is to bring organizations and groups together to um basically reduce, eliminate problems or risks that are going for our citizens, like underage drinking, violence, um, substance abuse, that type of thing, um, to kinda um give them alternatives to that. As such, um, we've been doing a lot of partnering because we don't have an awful lot of budget. It's okay. Um, we do a great deal of partnering with a lot of great people in various committees. Um, we deal with the schools, the police, um, town departments, like the rec department, youth groups, communities, um, you name it, we've been there. Um, our premier, our premier um event is the Bon Voyage um party that a lot of you have heard about. I mean, I know that your daughter actually went, um, and a couple others, um.
I went on that one.
Huh?
I went on it.
Oh, that's right, years ago. Yeah, about that. Long time ago. It's been around that long.
They didn't have it when I was there. We'd just find a dirt road.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Well, um, that's, what you see there are pictures of the setup. Um, this event has gone from about a seven thousand dollar event to raising funds um in the fifteen, almost twenty thousand dollar range that the parents, um, we work with the parents from the school, and they raise this money, and we spend it on the kids in activities. That event is, we used to rent out places, now we're doing it all at the Grafton High School. Um, we don't have to rent buses, we don't have to um deal with uh facility charges beyond the school charges. Um, our janitorial staff has been outstanding, and we have a beautiful high school, so why not use it? And it is almost, to me, it's almost like a college uh community center, you know, it really is beautiful. The other thing that we've been doing a lot lately has been movie nights. Um, we bring in the younger kids, um, we've recently had, what is it, the Grinch? Uh, Debbie, was it, um, uh, the Grinch, uh, Who Stole Christmas, I think it was, not the original, the one, the, the Jim Carrey one. Oh, it was great. Um, first time I ever saw the older kids who were like about sixth grade actually sit there and watch a movie and not socialize and, you know, do all the um things that they do. But what we do on that is we raise, we raise money with our uh candy sales and pizza sales um for the Grafton Food Bank. We also do for to, to uh entrance fee is a canned good for the Grafton Food Bank. So our goal there, right there, um, is um using ourselves to promote something that is good for our town. We also do, um, we bring in the high school kids, um, the F C L club that is up at the high school. And those kids are mentors to being there as high school students, helping out, and the little kids see them, and they're selling them pizza and they're talking to them. Oh, I know you, you know, that, that type of thing. So it's really nice to see them relating to something that uh we've been doing. Um, I know the schools do an awful lot of movie nights, but we kinda jump in with them to, to do this, and uh it works out really well, so win, win, win all the way around. With that money that we've raised um through the candy sales and such, um, we've been doing Christmas and Thanksgiving, um, the, the food, the Grafton Food Bank does Christmas and uh presents plus food baskets and that type of thing. That's where our money goes for the, from those um concession stands. That's what we put our donations towards. We also have been doing um National Night Out. Now Debbie had said, don't pass it around because you might not get it back, has my son's, my grandson's name on it, so sorry about that. But at the National Night Out, we gave these out. They're school lunchboxes, and as you know, that's right in um about the first week of uh August. We say, hey, do you have a, do you have a lunchbox? Do you need a lunchbox for the kids? We get, uh, lots of them. I, I know they're being used because my grandson bought home one that he thought was his, that he left on the bus, and it definitely was not. Um, so we also assisted with the uh, the youth police academy. Again, you see where all our goals are, is promoting that self-esteem, that um, let's get the kids motivated to do the right things, to make the right decisions. We did Halloween bags for the little ones with um little, you know, one doll, the dollar store trinkets inside, um, just so that they had something that was reflective to, again, to be safe. Um, one of our big things that we did do was do the value up school assembly. Uh, we coordinated that with the um Grafton Home Fields uh Bank and also the high school. Um, we did, they had an evening program that we actually got to see. Um, that was a, uh, the brother Greg Scott was the uh brother of Rachel Scott, who was one of the first ones killed in Columbine. And he kinda did a big turnaround in his life existence. And um, but we were able to bring him in as a kind of a motivational speaker. What was he motivating? Value, your value, your essential value. And this is for all the high school. Um, it really, I mean, the evening program got us laughing, dancing, crying, and just feeling horrible about Columbine, but also saying, this is great. It just was so good. So value yourself, make decisions for your behavior that demonstrate that you value yourself. And also, the old golden rule, treat others, I'll treat others with value, that you see their value. So that makes that piece of the bullying and the, us stand up for each other type of thing. One thing that I actually even brought back into work, um, and I had them do this, so I'm gonna make you do it, sorry about that. Um, I want you just to close your eyes for just a minute, tune out everything, and think about all the people you care about. And when you do that, you'll see, you will vision them, but put them all on one side of the room. Those people are the ones that you really care about, and you'll be surprised that who flashes. Those people are the ones that you really care about, and you'll be surprised that who flashes into your mind, and it's an amazing piece, and that's what you need to generate, that value, that's who you care about. And so, make sure you pass that along. So, that's what Together We Can is, you have a brochure that we had of some activities. We partner with anybody that is willing to help us accomplish our goals. So, that's how you get the bang for your money of what we do, is that partnership. Any questions?
Thank you, Kathy.
You're welcome.
No, I guess the only question, how many members on Together?
We're very small, we only have four, now that you've got Diane on us, thank you very much. We have Mark Owles from the Police Department, and Billy Cook and his daughter, and there's about five of us now. So, again, we're very small, but we make a powerful statement.
And how big is the committee, how big can the committee get, is it seven member?
I think it's seven, but there's probably ad hoc places for people all the time.
Oh, yes.
Right, well, and that was, so that, I think that was a great pitch for that committee too, and are there, and there's probably openings too on the committee?
Oh, yes, we always, and we always welcome anybody, so.
I just wanted to add that to our school resource officers, the chief popcorn maker at the movie night.
Yes.
And it's really good for the kids to see him there.
They know him.
In uniform, making popcorn.
That's awesome.
Stuff like these things, too, so it's a really good, there's a lot of things going on, it's like the water cycle. You know, the kids see the bigger kids, and they see adults helping the bigger kids, and it's just, and then they're contributing to the food bank, and it's just a continuous circle.
That's great.
Mr. Passo hiding in the back. Yes.
I know.
A movie movie we saw.
I was a teacher, actually since I retired, we liked to have a teacher.
You can't sit in the back and talk, you need to come.
You're not scared to talk.
Since I retired, we needed a teacher on the board, and so Diane Rassacott is the food, the food and.
Family. FCL.
She's the FCL advisor, but she is the food and consumer science teacher at the high school. Now, she took Eileen Flynn, I don't know if you had her as a student, as a teacher?
I had you as a teacher.
So, she's the position that Eileen Flynn once held, and anyway, so she is from Oxford, and she agreed to join us on our committee to make that connection to the schools, and also Officer Owles makes that same connection as well. And he's busy, 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 really relating to the students very well.
Yeah, good. Is there, I guess, two things, is there anything the business community, like the local business community can do to help, or if there's something that the kids can do to help them?
I'm sure that there are. We do get a lot of donations from the business community for the Bon Voyage Party, but.
Be nice if the students could do something for them and make, you know, and have an experience for them that, you know, a learning experience or.
Good contact with.
John is great, he really is, and he might have some ideas. My other question is now, you have a budget?
Yes.
Right? I don't know if you talked about that, if you did, I missed it, I apologize, but it's twenty-five hundred dollars, what's your budget?
It's thirty-three hundred.
Thirty-three hundred, so how does that work out? Is that enough money or?
Yeah, I'd say, yeah, yes.
The way our partnerships.
Because this is your chance, it's budget season, so if you need another five hundred bucks or something, I'm sure we could.
You know, five hundred dollars additional will be, give us more of an opportunity to help partner with other events and.
Yeah, well, you do a lot of great work, and for, you know, for what your budget is, it's an incredible amount of positive experiences and it's a really good cause, so I'm just asking if that's sufficient or if you need.
We would love more, come on, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, I will never look a gift horse in the mouth, you know me better.
That's why I asked the question.
Yes.
All right.
All right.
Well, thank you for coming in, that was great, guys, thank you.
Did you enjoy your Bon Voyage?
I loved it, we went to the YMCA in Westboro.
Yeah, yeah.
And then two thousand and three.
Yeah.
That's when I graduated, yeah.
That was good.
We went to Soap Hill and.
It was a good time.
Thank you, it's nice seeing you.
Thanks for coming in.
You wouldn't know where that is.
Yeah, I do, it's off of your shelf, come on, from this town. All right, moving on, we have the Information and Technology Committee. You guys wanna come up and get us a quick update on where we're at? I thought at first you two were confused that it was Monday night or something.
Here almost every night. Okay. You seen before you, three out of the five IT committee members, myself, Bob Hasting, or you guys all know us, I don't know how, Bob Carroll, you may or may not know him as much as you know the couple of us. The other two members of the committee are Bill Jones, who had a prior commitment tonight, Trish Myers, who was able to be here, but only for a short time, she had to leave. So, we have been, I'd say relatively less active in the very recent years than we had been in the past. Our role over time has been largely to advise the town administration on matters related to the information technology. Prior, prior to the last few years, when the town didn't have really a full-time or a regular IT contractor, as Coughlin has been lately, the committee has often had to be more involved in some of the day-to-day stuff. Years ago, we, some of our members dealt with some backup issues and all that, but we have in the, over the last few years, had some, you know, the help of some very good contractors. The committee has been involved in, I think, in almost every one of the selection of an IT contract vendor. So, we've reviewed, reviewed vendor responses, we've sometimes participated in the development of the request for proposals, we've reviewed responses, made recommendations to the administration as to who we felt was the best vendor to hire. Since Coughlin came on board in particular, we were very impressed with them when we interviewed the vendors, and, you know, we touched base with them at least once a year to get a feel for how things are going, and I'd have to say we're, things have, over the time we've been in existence, which goes back to around two thousand and five, six, something like that, the town's IT infrastructure has become ever so much more important and mission-critical, and has also become much better managed and more up-to-date and being kept up-to-date. So, in that sense, we're kinda happy that we don't have to be, you know, too heavily involved in keeping on top of that, but we continue to be, to try to be aware of what's happening in IT in town, to offer our services where necessary, as all five of us have varying backgrounds in ITs, you know, usually going back, most of us going back a good many years. I have to say, I've been involved in information technology in one way or another for fifty years or more, and Bob probably almost as long, maybe longer.
Maybe not so much.
You're one of the younger folks, Bob, the other Bob. But in any case, currently what we are actively involved in is investigating the clickers. We have, we're in the process of reviewing what has happened with the town meeting clickers last year, and going forward, you know, there's still a fair amount of work to be done before we kind of can feel like we really understand the situation, and hopefully we'll be able to help the town resolve the apparent, the apparent problems we've had with the clickers.
The ghost of Grafton Town Meeting is what it is. Years ago, it was the microphones, it wouldn't work, and then it's, sometimes it's the old, there's always some tech problem with our town meetings, right?
Yep, well, we shall see, hopefully over the next few weeks, we will be able to, you know, get to the bottom of what's happening with the clickers and determine what needs to be done to either come to the conclusion that the clickers actually work and can be made to work reliably, or come to the conclusion that, for whatever reason, it just doesn't work for us. And I'm not gonna predict which way it's gonna fall out because I don't know enough about it yet. So, that's sort of, you know, perhaps one of the most immediate things we're currently looking at. We're also interested more generally in making sure, in being aware of anything, anything else that we can do to be of assistance. The other area that we're kind of actively starting to look at is the town website, not that it's anything bad about it, but we've, I think, by and large, there's a lot of good things have been done with the town website, but over the last couple of years, we've received occasional comments about little, you know, just little things, and so I think we're looking to, you know, sort of take a, take a good look at that from an outsider's perspective and make some recommendations for, you know, little things that can be done further, because no matter how good things are, you can always make things better. And then, some of us have a fair amount of expertise in web design and user interaction design, so we hope to bring that to, to see if we can identify anything, anything the town can make to make the web experience even better for our customers. Beyond that, we're always open to suggestions from the administration, from any of you, as to what more can we do to be of assistance? We, you know, I think we'd like to be able to do more, and it's sometimes hard to know, a lot, a lot of the things have to be done, you know, in-house, day-to-day. That's really not where we're, where we're probably most valuable, because we meet at best maybe once a month, less than that if there's really nothing much. So, that's sort of an overview, at least from my own perspective, I'd be more than happy to have Bob and Bob chime in and their own thoughts. Because one thing we didn't do is really have time as a committee to prepare for tonight, because I dropped the ball on that, way back, it was way back in August, I think, Cindy set up this date for it, and I promptly put it, filed that email, and promptly forgot about it. So, we really haven't had a chance as a committee to prepare for this discussion.
Do you guys do any work with the school department? I mean, that, to me, would be an area where obviously there's a lot of computers, a lot of technology, and it would be nice if you guys could reach out to them, or I don't know.
Funny, funny you should mention that, actually, because for a time, two, three, four years ago, something like that, there was an attempt made to engage the school's IT director, Neil, and prior to that, I mean, his predecessors as well. We were hoping to be able to leverage the school department's IT expertise and with, to help out on the municipal side of IT. And a lot of, a lot of effort went into attempting to do that, we had some good conversations with the school department's IT people, but in the end, it turned out that there wasn't sufficient commonality between, between the way the school department and the municipal side, with what they do with IT. Superficially, it looks like there ought to be a lot, a lot in common, but it turns out there's less so, and the last, I think, Neil, we tried maybe for a year or so to have Neil work with us on the municipal side, and we just came to the conclusion that there wasn't enough overlap between the two and not enough time, not enough resources available. So, yeah, it's not like, it's not like the idea never occurred to either us as a committee or Tim, but it just, it seems like there ought to be more of an opportunity than it turned out that there was.
I just, after we talked, I started to think about the things, and I, and I'm gonna publicly thank Bob Hasserger because of, it's about infrastructure, right? I don't know how long ago it was, but I wrote down all this stuff for the past ten years. So, FMAN stands for Fiber Municipal Area Network, where we took all of the coaxial cable that used to connect the buildings, it was provided from the INET cable fees. With Bob's help and leadership, I don't know how long ago it was, we connected all these buildings with fiber, the high schools connected to us, the police stations, South Grafton, the library, you know, everybody used to have separate internet connections, and I've covered this before, I'm just gonna do it again, because I wanna thank you, because you were the, you were driving for us. And when we did that, we saved money on telephony, IT, internet capacity, people come back here to the server, I don't need servers at every location anymore. So, there was a lot of synergy there, and we didn't use, well, we used franchise fee money to build that, because we wanna broadcast these type of meetings and have transparency. So, we're meeting so many goals with that one piece of infrastructure, it was critical. So, I'm just gonna go through a couple of things. Since I've been here, we have online bill pay, a lot of web stuff, the website that we have is now scalable to a phone, it wasn't that way two and a half years ago. Online recreational registration services, you have more than one kid to re-register every year for every program, it was a nightmare for me, I knew it was for other people, we solved that problem. We have a program for registration for recreation programs, that purchases can be made online. GIS, online permitting, we got a grant for online permitting, See Click Fix, another web-based application for people to report to us, got a grant for that. Code Red, not really IT, but does email, does text, and does voice messaging in the event of an emergency, or school delay, or trash delay, or, God forbid, a worse emergency. Split that cost among three particular departments. The web, the, the library developed their own CWMS app for a phone, so you can get everything that's in the library on this app. So, as long as you have your library card, you can get that, and that's an app that they built, and that was part of a goal that we set for Beth, probably two years ago. The payroll system, there was a lot of paper in this building for people asking to take time off or I was sick, that's all automated, all in line with a shore force. And that, if I tell you what we did before we had that, my head almost exploded and yours would too, so we fixed that and we streamlined it. There's no redundancy to the point of people entering things into a computer three times, that does not happen anymore. And those are all things that started with the IT committee, I'm not saying it's me, I'm saying it was that group that was here before me, and we just picked up the ball, and they helped facilitate those types of things, relative to redundancies, the backup, the selection of an IT provider. We've been through four since I've been here, Coughlin's by far the cheapest and the best. We only have thirty-eight PCs on desks throughout the building. We have Wi-Fi, we've never had that, I think a lot of that was attributable to you guys as well. Certainly, the FMAN made that possible for us from a connectivity standpoint. And then we have virtual servers, we have eight, six physical devices, boxes, but there's virtual ones inside of that that allow, if Becca's computer goes down right now, we can make the phone call to Coughlin, and they can speed up that hard drive as it was last damaged and give it back to her within two hours. So, I mean, that's, that's the day-to-day stuff that we make sure gets done, but I think the IT committee fostered that at the beginning. So, those, when we talked, those are the kind of the notes I was kinda jotting down as we went through, and I think that's an accurate picture of where we are.
Yep, yeah, like I said before, we've made a tremendous amount of progress in how the town uses IT and how we've implemented. We've gone from a real scattershot, you know, a really motley collection of servers and desktops and laptops to a varying ages, and I think we all remember looking at some of the, some of the inventories from years ago, and we've got a much more up-to-date and modern and consistent set of servers, much better managed, thanks, thanks very much to Coughlin and predecessors who've, you know, set up central management, it is much more robust, much more smooth to operate. And having that kind of infrastructure, which we've seen develop over the years, is one of the things that facilitates some of the current, you know, and the more recent efforts. It just works, things work a lot better than they ever used to.
That's, there's a lot of efficiencies gained, and we've leveraged a lot of external dollars, not taxpayer dollars to do it.
And also, it just, you know, gets back to what I said before too, that the IT has really become mission-critical to the operation of this town. There's, if our IT infrastructure went down, business would pretty much grind to a halt. And the other thing that I wanna mention too, that we've leveraged the IT infrastructure for, which you guys take advantage of, Bob and I on the planning board, really, I think we've kind of pioneered that, the planning board, is the, using the town's IT infrastructure to support town boards and committees to, you know, to get much, you know, much more electronic communication, electronic document distribution. I know I've, I'm one of the people that, I very rarely feel the need to use the paper anymore. And we all have varying degrees of comfort with electronic documents, and there are occasions when paper still works better. But one of the things that I think we might wanna look at and think about going forward is really developing a more comprehensive set of best practices and tools to use the town's IT infrastructure to support more of the boards and committees. A lot of them are still more paper-based.
You know, when I first got on the board, we, I used to come in at night or on the weekends, and there was a file, and we'd have to read all the correspondence that would come into the office, and then we'd initial each page to say that we had read it, and when there was five initials on there, they put it away, but there would, you know, there'd be volumes of stuff, I'd be in here on a Sunday for a couple hours just going through all the correspondence, which is difficult, you know, and to, and to remember all that, so now it's like, you know, if it's important, we get an email and we can read it, you know, as they come in. You're not sitting there trying to read, you know, fifteen or twenty different correspondence, so to your point, it's.
There's another advantage, but I think maybe particularly the planning board, but.
There's another advantage, but I think maybe particularly the planning board, but some of the other boards, including you, too. It's, it's also helping transparency, the public being able to see, particularly on the planning board area. You know, there's all these cases that go on and on, and lots of correspondence about them, and it's not like tonight you're doing one thing and then that's the end of it, those things go on, people will have questions, and it's all organized, Ann Morgan did a lot with that. It's all organized so that you can go down, you can find the case, you can find the latest papers from any, you know, from any place on the internet. That's got to be really beneficial. Lots of times I answer questions, you know, on social media, check the, check the website.
Four out of five of us were on that board, and remember going to the mailbox and grabbing your paper for the, for the meeting, and it's like, you know, a hundred dead trees in your box, you have to grab, and it's so much better now that it's just all online and you can read it. Even reading the plans are easier, too.
Don't be, don't let it be lost that there's staff in the office making sure that stuff gets to be digitized. This doesn't happen, there's a lot of staff labor that goes in.
It, it takes a lot of effort to do that.
And this, this, this gets me to one, one thing that I keep in mind about, you know, trying to expand the use of these resources to other boards and committees. I'm particularly concerned about whether we can come up with a practical way of making these electronic resources usable for boards and committees that have no staff here in Town Hall. You know, your, your board, our board, you know, we, we've got good staff, we've got plenty of staff resources here in Town Hall, a lot of boards don't have that. And, and yet, if there's a way that we could work it out to where they can also leverage these electronic resources, that would be great. It's easier said than done, and I certainly realize it, but that's one of the things in my mind going forward that, that I'd, I'd like, I'd like to look more into.
Well, boards, they have permitting, like Board of Health, those will be the responsibility of the applicant to upload into the permitting software, so that'll be accessible to those boards, and it won't be labor-intensive for us. We'll solve, we'll solve a little bit of that.
That's, that's, that's one of the reasons, looking forward to seeing the permitting system that Joe's been working on, like to see that come to, you know, come to full fruition, because I think that will be a big help, for the reason you just said.
That'll be huge. Another thing I want to see is online bill pay. City of Worcester has that, and it makes things so much easier, especially because when you get like twenty water bills.
You can pay your bills online for grafting.
Yeah, we have some, we have some at least.
For border vehicle excise tax, it's through unit pay.
So it's the same as City of Worcester, okay.
It is, but you, you pay, if you use a credit card, you're going to be charged with fees. I don't know what the fee is for the, I, I know there's a fee, and then you can use your routing number for a check, and it's free.
But permitting fees, would, we'd be waiting for the online permitting process to get done.
Yeah, but that will be done, and you can pay with a credit card.
Right, there's, there's more that can, right, more that can and sooner or later will be done along those lines, absolutely. I mean, we, we're not going to be able to live without IT anymore.
We're not living without it.
So, and there's a, a lot of experience on your committee, you know, hundreds of years, so to speak. One of the things that I see all the time as I'm, you know, read the news, which of course I read online, like you mentioned, is data security and things of that nature. Do you feel that, you know, as much as you see it in the news, and breaches of security with sensitive material, or just plain people being jerks and shutting down servers and things of that nature, is that something that you talk about as like a team? Or is it something you spent a lot of time on in the last couple of years to make sure that our town's infrastructure is secure?
I know we've, we've talked about it off and on in the committee, I don't know, I don't know that we've, to date, and that's probably one thing that we, that we can take into under advisement, is that, is to drill down a little bit more and make sure that we have a good understanding of what, how the town's IT is currently situated relative to some of these security questions. I know one of the things that had come to my mind a while back, it was in, you might have, might have remembered, it was in the news that the city of Atlanta got hit with a ransomware attack, basically their whole IT infrastructure was gone.
Yeah.
And that hit them real hard, it cost them, I think, millions of dollars to recover from that. In principle, anybody's vulnerable to that, despite our best precautions, largely because of the way that typically gets in, is someone sends an email to a town employee, there's a virus, or some kind of malware embedded in that email, and that's how these attacks start. Part of the reason that we may not be too worried about it is simply because we're, we're not, we're not a very juicy target for something like that.
Yeah, and I understand that, but...
But!
We, we are worried about it, though.
We still worry about it.
As well you should be.
Every staff underneath us has email security protocol, if you don't know where it came from, don't click on it, don't click inside the link.
Sure.
If you want to go visit the website, we do that whole piece, you know, the Wi-Fi in this building, for example, there's one for public, and there's an incredibly encrypted password for the, the one to go back to our server, so Becca can connect to that server. So I mean, we have those things in place, there's an appliance in that room, the filters, there's Gmail that filters. There has been one spam email that's gone out, unfortunately, to some people from, when Donna Gerard was here, somebody got a piece of that email, and those go out to people from a certain time period, and we try to notify all of them, just don't, don't open that email.
I get that one, I get that one like every couple months.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, as, you know...
So we gotta, we gotta be ahead of it, but certainly, you look at it, we can talk to Coughlin about what those particular protocols that are in place are.
Yeah, we, we, we may want to continue to pay attention to that, it's, I am aware that we've, we've, we've taken quite a few of the, at least quite a few of the steps that are necessary, because, like I said, even though we're not a juicy target, we're still a target.
I mean, most of the time it's just annoyances, but sometimes those annoyances are worse.
Yes.
Anything else, guys, that we could do for you, or as a committee?
Just...
As Tim said, you know, I, I think, I don't think you're going to get a more glowing cosign than that, than what everything, all the accolades that you guys have done for the town, so we thank you.
Anytime, anytime anything comes to your mind, anything you think we might be able to help with, we're here.
Great, thank you guys so much.
Thanks for taking the time to come in.
Thank you for coming.
All right, moving on, we have the, that's right, the cemetery commissioners.
I know, I don't know why I crossed it up.
Hi, Chris.
What's going on?
Thank you for being patient, guys. So, and Darrell, yeah, you, I was going to say, you're a part of this, too, right?
I'm not a commissioner, but I'm here.
All right, good. So, welcome.
Thank you.
And I, I believe this is kind of like a two-part thing, one is a touch base thing, and two, I know Bruce, you had some, you wanted to bring them in?
Sure.
And talk about a couple of things, so why don't we start there?
Want to start with me, or just give an overview of what the cemetery commissioners?
Well, yeah, well, I guess we could start.
I think we could dispense with the touch base, can't we?
Yeah.
This committee hasn't changed its purpose as far as back as I can remember, it's no different now. The other more pressing businesses on the table, I think we're ready to take it on.
Okay, so, fair enough. Go ahead.
Just as much for public consumption as it is for our consumption. I mean, my assumption is that you guys do exactly what your charge is set to do, I, I'm aware of that. But as we, you know, bring in IT committees and stuff like that, and make everybody generally aware of what's going on, it alleviates some of the misconceptions that come along later in the process, especially if something were to come on, like we're going to have a discussion on something else, and that's going to grow into some other conversations around town, and so maybe it's a good idea for, just to tell us why you're here, what you're formed to do, what you govern.
Yeah, we, our committee oversees the three active, at least, Grafton cemeteries from a rules and regulation and management standpoint.
And those cemeteries are?
Riverside Cemetery, Grafton Center, Pine Grove and North Grafton, Fairview and South Grafton. Those are the three, there's, there's actively burials done.
Not to be confused with the religious, like the Catholic burial grounds and things of that nature, you don't do everything, you do a couple ones that the town owns and maintains.
Well, there's St. Philip Cemetery, which borders Riverside, used to be managed by St. Philip Church, it was then turned over to the Diocese of Worcester, that goes back better part of three decades now. So there used to be more grafted space, but that was since taken over by the diocese, and it's not really a Grafton cemetery anymore, that is open for burials to all the surrounding towns in addition to Grafton. So our, our mission statement is painfully short, so that's...
That's fine.
You know, that's what we do.
So, I asked, well, we brought up a few years ago, the Affordable Housing Trust was actively looking at a parcel of property on Hudson. So during its diligence, what we found was that in the sixties, early sixties, there was a town meeting that allocated this particular property, one side of it to be for the brush dump, the other side to be for the expansion at a future date of the Riverside Cemetery. So, outside of that, not much has happened with the property in about fifty years. So what I wanted to do was start a discussion that was open in here, instead of just approaching individually and finding information on my own, I figured I was going to have to get here to this board anyways, so we might as well just put everybody in one audience, make it a public type of thing, and at least hash out some of the questions that I had, and what my hopes for that particular parcel were, and how they conflict with your charge. What I want to do is continue on with the diligence that the Affordable Housing Trust is currently conducting, and while I can't speak for them, I can only speak for myself as a selectman, to explore that piece of property for an affordable housing development, like we've talked about here about a year ago. And then it just kind of went on the side, we did our diligence, and then we found all these pieces that are not really get, get in the way, but need to be aired out, and need to make sure we have some closure on to move forward with it. So, where I'm at now is, is essentially just, I want to know your thoughts on it, I want to know if there's other areas in town that we can explore, I want to know if you want to use the whole parcel. Just kind of bring me up to speed, up to speed on all your thoughts, and then I could go and take those back to the Affordable Housing Trust as a member out here now, and they can, of course, review the tape, so to speak, and then we can start a more detailed discussion on what we want to do with the property. I don't know if you want my opinion, or if you just kind of want...
Sure.
So, as far as public use of lands in town for what the, what is in our portfolio, so to speak, there's certain lots that are more conducive to development, there's certain lots that are more conducive to do other activities, and I want to make sure I value all those things that the town wants to do with its parcels. This particular lot and the pieces that we were looking at is, is ideal for what we were trying to develop. And of course, there's a whole dialogue that you can have for why this is beneficial to the town, why we should be approaching it this way, the goals of the land trust, the goals of the public settlement, and things of that nature. Those are all discussions that we can have at a later time, but my thoughts for this was highest and best use would be that. And then I wanted to make sure that, seeing that town meeting gave the authority and control over the commissioners a while back, to understand where you're at. And I've been doing this for a while, planning board, finance committee, et cetera, et cetera. I've been pretty religious in my approach to town politics and town planning and things like that for just about fourteen years, and never really talked about this. I would guess if we had three hundred people at a town meeting, two hundred and fifty of them would even know that we owned that piece of the Hudson property, never mind across the street. Brush dump, of course, everybody, well, not everybody, but most people use, so they know, but it's a fairly large and substantial parcel. It's a, majority of it is uplands, it has access to public utilities, it has Milbury Street, which is an excellent egress, and it also has Hudson as well. So that's why we looked at and explored it. I guess I can, I can let that go, and just, I know you guys have met, and now you've talked about this, and...
Yeah, we convened on the thirteenth, because we had gotten a couple of outreaches from different committees, affordable housing was one, just kind of bringing the issue to light. It was, it wasn't parchment, but it was close, March nineteen, nineteen sixty...
Yeah.
Was the town meeting where that happened, where the appropriation happened, is twenty-five acres total, seven for the brush dump, eighteen for the expansion of the cemetery, and that's kind of where we are here. When we met, I mean, I have a few numbers we can walk through that, that helped to kind of build the case, but we voted more kind of on principle to try to retain the land for cemetery use, only because it just speaks to the board's main purpose, is to enable the Grafton residents to have access to burials for as long as possible. And we're lucky versus some other towns, Westbro, Milbury, Shoesbury, which are either making big investments right now in new cemetery space, or looking at a ticking clock where it's running out, and having to change and tighten regulations, and really change the way their cemeteries are operated, and make burials a little less accessible for folks. We don't want to ever really kind of go down that road, we don't have to. So we wanted to hold the land for that use, because this is not really going to be, if the land were to go, this problem, none of the people in this room are going to be talking about it. I mean, it's long-term, you know, this is a classic of just punting something down the road for the next generation to take on, when all the cemetery space is gone, and they have to satisfy the state law that says you have to have space for burial. The things that make this a little bit tricky, people were quick to point out, well, what about cremation, and the acceleration of that? Yes, it's happening. We trail in Grafton, the national averages by ten to fifteen percent, they say by two thousand and thirty, seven out of ten burials are going to be cremation burials, or cremation cases for funerals. That said, I'm the person you could ask, I sit with a lot of people, and even when they choose cremation, they still want a place to visit. And when you buy a lot in Grafton to bury even a small urn, you have to buy two lots to put up a vertical stone, and the stone is the thing people usually want. So even as cremation numbers continue to ramp up, and they're probably going to be accelerated by baby boomers that will start to pass, that may not yield a decrease in lot purchases in any of the town cemeteries. So we're trying to keep a pulse on, you know, where the industry's going and what this land's used for, versus what the, kind of the dynamics in the, in the industry are. We have, right now, Darrell was good enough to, to run some numbers from the cemetery office, you know, a fair amount of space left in two of the three cemeteries. If we were to use the average number of graves sold, at least for the past few years, we would get about twenty-five to twenty-seven years out of Fairview, another, only twelve in Riverside, that's a smaller number there, but there's a small number of graves left in the corner of that cemetery. Pine Grove is where the real opportunity is, they did the expansion of Pine Grove. That would hold us, all else being equal, for probably eighty years, there's two thousand one hundred and thirty-nine lots up there. However, when the other two cemeteries fill up, when Riverside's full, if we take this parcel off the table, and then Fairview's full, now, when that twenty-seven years runs out, now we're down to like a thirty-year window, because all of those plot purchases are going to funnel, you know, to that one cemetery. So this is definitely going to be a problem that presents itself to a group of people sitting in this room, and the question is, you know, is it worth letting that parcel go for the affordable housing project and their, and their endeavors, what they're trying to do with it? Or is it more advantageous to have a parcel of land that's usable, that is suitable for burials, that butts a cemetery that we have right now, that prevents us being in this crisis mode that some of these other towns are in? If anyone's seen, if you drive down Route Thirty, go past Tuffs into the town of Westbro, if you look in that residential neighborhood, probably a tenth of a mile past there, Westbro just expanded their cemetery there. Paul had reached out to one of his peers at DPW over in Westbro, who sent us an image of the plot plan, but more importantly, the numbers that went with it. The bid itself, I think it was eight hundred and eighteen thousand dollars, another nineteen thousand dollars for bidding contracts and assistance with technical details, and the design of the cemetery, another eighteen thousand. So you found a town that was in a, in a place where their, their space ran out, they found a suitable parcel of land, but have a fairly substantial investment to make that suitable for them, and that's probably only going to last them, I'm guessing, maybe thirty years, what they've expanded to. So we're just trying to take a, a much longer view of that parcel of land, and not wanting to subject, you know, this board, the town of Grafton, having to take on a massive infrastructure cost where you really have to. I mean, if you didn't do it, you know, that law, there is a law on the books that you have to have suitable burial space for your residents, if Grafton didn't act, or if they got delayed, I don't know if at that point someone could file a class action suit against the town, I don't know what the legal exposure might be, but those are all things that we're just trying to avoid outright. So we, we came to it more on principle than anything, any of these statistics, that we just want there to be suitable burial space for as long as possible. We have a, a space there that's ready to accommodate that.
So under that mindset, should we look at and assess the other parcels in town that the town has access to, if we could find something of equivalent value that is not conducive to what we're trying to accomplish on the Affordable Housing Trust, but is, I don't know what type of pass you get on, you know, the construction of these projects.
Right.
So, you know, does it alleviate some concerns of, you know, conservation concerns, easement concerns? Can you put these places in where you really couldn't put other things, so to speak? For example, the library's going to be built in a couple of years, and it's going to... For example, the library's gonna be built in a couple of years, and it's gonna provide us with fairly good access to the back piece of Peral, which there's uplands back there. Is that something that's conducive? If the infrastructure is there and if it's something we're gonna do over the next twenty years, maybe we look at it because we're building a road up there now anyways. So, I wanna look at those things on a whole, which is kinda why, you know, I'm a part of this process. But I also wanna look at it from, uh, the point of the housing trust and trying to alleviate our concerns with, uh, the forty B process in a small town like Grafton and also providing, um, appropriate levels of affordable housing to our community. Um, so weighing those things against what you're talking about.
Can I ask you a quick question? For the, would, would affordable housing work for you for that piece behind the library?
I would say that, uh, it, it probably wouldn't. For one, you're gonna be using the parking lot of the library. You'd have to build an actual road, um, in there. It's, uh, it's certainly not as conducive as this, um, because you would be basically putting a, a long cul-de-sac through there. I think the most opportune place in town is either this one or on Worcester Street. Um, this one's probably would've been better because our, our traffic impact on the surrounding areas is far less than it would be on Worcester Street.
But...
But what?
I, I, I don't understand how you're saying, so for, if, if you took this land, are you asking them now that if they would do like a, you, you switch the lands up, if you trade this for something else?
No, I'm not saying trade. I mean, there's a lot, there's a lot that goes on in the process. What, what's happened so far is that we've pretty much stalled what we were trying to do on the Affordable Housing Trust as we were trying to find a parcel of lands that was suitable for this type of development.
Sure.
And, um, trying to engage all the, the parties as they were to the benefit of us taking a little bit more of control over affordable housing in town, on which this could certainly do. So, of all the town parcels, which we would get a lot cheaper than we were if we were going out to market to find something, things, so we could further our gains in affordable housing, there's very few parcels in town that could do it. I don't know how Peralta's gonna be. Alls I do know is that there's uplands behind there. When we originally went through the process of buying it, um, and the library is kinda gonna give us access to those things, or could give us access to those things. I'm not opposed to going back there and doing further engineering back there to see if it's something conducive. And I just use Peral just 'cause it's, there's other town parcels too that might be good. But, but there's very few that we could do a project with Affordable Housing Trust on. I would like to look at other places that you could do a cemetery project on that we certainly couldn't do a housing project on.
What, what is the acreage you're looking for in that parcel or elsewhere in town?
Well, we've done some of the, um, I don't, I think we have a copy of the preliminary sketches, but there's, uh, eight or nine acres of the Hudson and Milbury, um, corner there. That go into the back that's usable. There's a fairly sizable wetlands restriction that's up in the corner, right on, uh, Milbury and Hudson. That's where the drainage comes across the street, um, that's wet. And then in the back, of course, you get close to the river, so you have a fairly, um, fairly good setback there. We wouldn't go that far back anyways. You guys all saw the plans when we brought them in, uh, eight or nine months ago, and there's some vernal pools in the back as well. Um, I imagine those would be restrictions for the cemetery as well. You probably couldn't touch those areas and have to fall into the same auspices that we do. Um, unless, and I couldn't find this out on my own, you guys have some relief from those type of things if you're building a cemetery, or you're just government, same rules and regulations that everybody else is. Um, and if we were to talk about all these things and as part of like this process as an overall plan, if you're telling me I've, I've got a nut to pay in thirty years, um, maybe that should be part of our master plan and when we, when we roll these things out, we know that twenty-five years, we should really start thinking about expansion of our cemeteries and what those costs are.
The one thing with the cemetery, Bruce, is what Westbro ran into and, you know, and, and Craig and John know the area. Um, they have to dig out everything out of the ground where they're building theirs. That's where the million dollar price tag came in, and they chose the location because there was no abutts. Very toughs on one side. They own the land behind it. They own that land. There's only two or three houses.
Sure.
Locating a cemetery obviously is tough. Um, when the people built these cemeteries in the seventeen, eighteen hundreds, they chose areas where they knew they could dig without hitting giant rocks. That's why they're, most of them are along the rivers 'cause it's gravel. So, to, to, Westbro's large expenses digging eight feet, ten feet of all that topsoil and all the rock off that site, where this site, it's just, you pull the stumps, and the site really is developed 'cause it's not, it's just gravel. And that's what makes this site a, 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 a good spot for a cemetery.
Yeah.
Versus, you know, trying to go, going someplace else where it's, it's unknown, you know, is, is it wet? Five feet down? Is it ledge? It's...
Sure.
I ju, I just don't see if thi, this land was committed to the cemetery back in, back in nineteen sixty. Why would we jeopardize that as a community? To, to Chris's point, we have, we're fortunate. We have the land set aside. Um, land isn't gonna get cheaper.
Nope.
You know, thirty years from now, if we're looking, if somebody else is here and they're looking at how to solve this problem, um, it's gonna cost a lot more money. I mean...
Well, do we have an assessment of what it's actually gonna cost there? 'Cause I don't know if this is not gonna cost a million dollars to make this opportune. I mean, we've done some of the engineering as Affordable Housing before we figured out that, you know, fifty-something years ago, there was a town meeting. There's no deed restriction. The quit, title's clean. This was just basically given to the town a couple hundred years ago. And in the sixties, it was decided it was going to be set up for this particular purpose. Has been left by and large dormant for five decades. Um, and, but now here we are, so it's fine. But I, I wanna make sure that if we're looking to hibernate on this for another thirty years, um, I wanna know what's up with it because I think there's other projects that could come in line here that are conducive to this property that would have a direct benefit now on the town as it develops over the years.
Besides, if it's not this property, we really seriously have to start thinking about twenty-five Worcester Street.
I agree.
Yeah, and that...
I agree. That's a nice property, and it's easy to access. The site development would be minimal. You have frontage. It's obviously not eight acres, but I think it's a start and something that we could do. The Affordable Housing Trust could do in, in a timely fashion to...
The only experience I've had with twenty-five Worcester, well, I've had two experiences with twenty, twenty-five Worcester. One, when they wanted to put the fire station up there. That didn't go very well. And then the other one was when the super park was going there. I don't know if it was just because of the prop, the property wasn't conducive to it, but that was something that got, um, stymied for a long time until it, it moved.
Does twenty-five Worcester have frontage or black, you know, side frontage on Kessel Street?
It does. You have two, you, you have two ways in and out. Unfortunately, you're, you're dancing in type of things. Why this is more conducive to that is Milbury Street is, um, um, it's not underused, but it's equipped to handle a large amount of traffic that's not currently there. Um, it also has another point, um, of egress, which is Hudson, which is nice. Kessel is okay, but you start putting thirty cars a day up, you, you, you're gonna jam that whole thing up.
How many units are you guys talking?
Well, we're four hundred units short.
Right, well, yeah, I know.
So, I mean, this is, it was this eight or nine acres. We don't, you know, I don't think the Affordable Housing Trust, I don't mean to speak for you, Bruce, but I don't think they could even venture to guess at this point what they'd be looking at here. But I think from my perspective, as somebody who's also been involved in affordable housing for the past fifteen years, I can tell you, there isn't a single proposal that's ever come before any board like this or any other board with the city or town that hasn't met with some reason why, either good or bad, that the development shouldn't go where it is. And this is despite what has been recognized across the state as a housing crisis that affects people in town, old and young, in particular, young families. So, it strikes me, and I know you guys have a job to do, and I wouldn't expect you to come here and say anything other than this is our charge and we're looking out for the future. And, you know, thirty, forty, a hundred years from now, we might come to a crisis where we don't know where to put people who passed away. But right now, we have living people who cannot afford housing. So, you know, we've got, we've got committees in this town that are charged with preserving land, so nobody can do anything with the land but walk on it and appreciate it, and I appreciate that. We have committees in this town, a commission that's charged with making sure that we have places to bury people off into the future generations from now, and I appreciate that. But we've got one committee in this town that's charged with developing housing for people who are here today. And since two thousand and seven, when that committee was started, they haven't got a single unit built, zero units. And every time somebody talks about a particular piece of land, we have a million reasons why something shouldn't be built there. We did one back in two thousand and thirteen. We were talking about putting two units, two whole units up on, what was it, Sunrise?
Off of Snow Road.
Snow Road.
Snow Road, right? And there was, there was a deed restriction on it. There was supposed to be a park built there. Fifty years ago, fif, and this room was packed, back when this room was green and this table's on the other side of the room. There were people all the way back to here, filled up with reasons why that should be a park, goddammit. And guess what is there now? Nothing!
Imagine trying to put a cemetery there.
Well, no, and I, so I understand that, and so when Bruce is talking about, let's get creative, let's maybe talking about swapping out land, I just wanna emphasize how important this is, and, and we just should not come up with reasons why it can't be done, but think of reasons how we can facilitate.
I mean, the twenty-five Worcester Street, I mean, I had said this, and I've been preaching, I've beyond the record saying, I think that's the best spot. It's walkable to the common. It's walkable to the school, the high school. It's walkable to North Street. It's walkable to Dunkin' Donuts, Rosen Scoops. It's walkable to the library. This is walkable for, it's gonna be young families, what you just said.
Yeah.
Families of four that have a single income parent or a, a mother and two kids. They need walkable, this is walkable really to nowhere.
They're gonna come out of, they're gonna come out of Milbury Street on one end and Pleasant Street on the other.
And, and West Street, there's water, there's sewer, there's gas. I think it's, I think, and I do, I think it's a better...
I can fully appreciate that, but I've been around long enough to know that that's a difficult site and it always has been difficult. And it's also not as attractive as this particular parcel. It's just not. I mean, we, we alleviate so many concerns for, for the neighborhood around it. So, look at the congestion of the area for one, for two, access to utilities and off-streets, three, access to just plain old land.
Access to utilities, selling, you, you have water, you have sewer.
You have water, sewer coming down Worcester Street. You have an inadequate road structure to handle the type of traffic that you could put on it. You could put fifty units here that are apartments that count off the three hundred and seventy-one that we need to actually have full immunity from forty B.
How many units can you fit on Worcester Street?
We haven't studied it yet. It really depends on what you're looking. Do you want townhouses?
That's the other point, of course. We haven't, we haven't really vetted that.
Okay, so, see, that's the thing. So, we vetted this particular place. We looked at the other sites, and we brought them here and showed them to you. And now, it's a year later, and to Ed's point, we keep passing these things around. The true value of what Ed said about affordable housing is terrific and everything. But from my standpoint and I, what my concerns are of the growth of this town over thirty years is you have properties that, like, uh, Prentice Street, which is two and a half acres, which is probably gonna see about fifty units on. You have absolutely no control over the development of that site. You can deny them all you want in the ZBA, which we have.
They didn't deny them.
Only gave them thirty-one units.
Yeah.
And made it not conducive for development.
Well, I'm just saying, it wasn't a denial.
Okay. Anyways, it goes from there. They denied him what he wanted anyways. It goes from there to the appeal process. We have no real leverage in that particular situation. These things happen all the time. If we can find areas that are conducive that the Affordable Housing Trust can work for, and we wanna do apartments, which means they all, of course, count, you realistically could spend quite a few years in an immune state, um, as you're developing it, all the way to the point where you get to those three hundred and seventy-one houses that are affordable in your stock, and you can get there. It won't happen unless we figure out ways to maneuver things like this around.
Does the zoning have to change for that to be?
It really doesn't, no.
It's never gonna, the three seventy-one will probably never happen, and, and I've said it before. We're chasing something that isn't worth chasing.
Okay.
To Ed's point, if, if, if there is a house, house shortage in the Commonwealth, then that's certainly something that we should, we should look at helping to do. But to chase that three seventy-one is just...
I don't think it's...
Even when we get there, there's no value to getting there. You, you, they, they give you a year grace period where you don't have to, you know, accept any forty B projects in a year.
No, if you get to three seventy-one, you're out of forty B permanently. If you get to the safe harbor, you've got a couple of years.
I mean, I, I think twenty-five Worcester Street is worth, worth doing. I mean, so the, the fire department, you know, the fire station had an issue. You know, the neighbors, you know, had an issue with it, and, and I think that's, that was why it got moved. The, uh, the super park got moved 'cause I think that at the end, the committee decided that they wanted to move it. Um, so really never went down that road to the point where we were looking to put it there. So, it's residential. It's on a state posted highway. There's good visibility leaving the site. I mean, I think it's, it's worth doing and we can get something going there quickly.
Yeah, I'd love to do both.
There's multi-family homes in the area too.
That's right.
And I just, I just have a quick, I'm all for increasing affordable housing. It does look to be a great site for affordable housing, but part of that process is vetting the property and seeing it. And then once this was discovered, that's part of the vetting process, is you get all this information. When this was first brought forward, we didn't know that. We didn't know that this land was set aside for a specific purpose. And now we know that. So, when vetting that property, new information was found.
Yeah, that's why they're here.
I know, but I'm saying that changes my opinion of putting affordable housing in this place because there is other information that came forward.
If this...
Not that it's not important, 'cause it is, and we do need to find a good fit, but it, it changes whether or not it's the best fit for...
But we need to do something more than just keep saying we're gonna find a good fit and we're gonna do something, and we really intend to. We know it's important because year after year after year, we don't do anything. We just keep thinking of reasons why we shouldn't do it.
So, if I found you, if, if we actually looked at some of the other properties in town, and you were part of that, that process, so to speak, and we found something that was suitable that extended that thirty-year period that you gave us to sixty, fifty, sixty years, is this something we could work around? 'Cause I highly doubt that we could take a look at the Peral uplands in the back and say we could put twenty-five units up there. It just doesn't look good from a town perspective. Now, we could probably get...
Put a cemetery there.
Because you're not putting houses.
But you still need a road.
You still need roads.
Neighbors are really quiet though.
So, you've been on a planning board, sorry. Can you honestly tell me that a development of fifty units is the same as a cemetery development? As far as traffic usage, utilities usage, services, and things of that nature? They're not, they're entirely different things. So...
The locations are two different things, Bruce.
No, you want me to put in, to get to access to the top lane, I have one way.
You're talking about Route one forty, where, converging at the center of town where most of our traffic goes through anyway? Like, that's probably where most of the traffic goes through in town. Places like this where it's much more quiet and, uh, there was not many cars.
Milbury Street is designed to handle a, a large capacity of traffic.
What's the speed limit on Milbury Street? It's thirty miles an hour.
Depends on where it is.
Thirty miles an hour, the whole way.
Well, if you guys get to the school, and then it's, well...
But I'm just saying, so like, you're, you're saying, huh, whi, which area is more conducive? You could look at it both ways.
No, tell me the other way. There's only one way to look at it. One would be serviced by one road going up into a cul-de-sac-type development, serviced through the parking lot of the library.
Yeah, so you have cars for the library. You have cars all on one forty all day. What's the traffic out there? So, you're adding what, thirty units, forty units? So, what, forty more cars? It's nothing, Bruce. You know that.
What are you talking about? Forty units is about four hundred trips a day.
This land.
Which is still nothing compared on one forty to four hundred trips a day on Milbury Street where there's, it's less of a, a main road.
But, back to my other point.
State road or whatever.
If this land were hypothetically on the table for housing, just hypothetically, let's just say it was.
Thank you.
Could it get rejected and just fall apart for any number of other reasons? To Ed's point, that we haven't gotten anywhere in how long? So, even if you had this viable piece of property, is it, is it not gonna make it through the process?
We would essentially, the Affordable Housing Trust would take up with, uh, probably, it could go a hundred different ways. But essentially, we could go for a normal, like, a friendly forty B, partnering with the developer. Like, we do some of the preliminary investment in, in the site. We get the site deeded over to us, of course, in our portfolio on the Affordable Housing Trust. It's much more valuable. And then we would use that to leverage how many units could be built, enticing a developer to come in, and, um, the flexibility of it, so how affordable it's going to be, how many units are affordable. All those things are kinda a little bit further down the line. Um, we've done some kinda stage one engineering there and wetlands delineation and things like that before we knew, um, about the, uh, the warrant from the sixties. So, it's, any development can fall apart. Um, I feel, I wouldn't feel comfortable if we couldn't have everybody on board moving the project all the way through. But yeah, it goes through the normal channels. It doesn't just get built. So, it's still gonna be, have all the variants applied for and things like that. But a friendly forty B is a little bit different. It's more handholding with a goal in mind. I'm, I'm not under the same mindset as Craig. I think it's a valuable thing to chase. Um, I think safe harbor allows you a path to it as long as that path is, is clear. And I think you can, you can make that path clear to people, and you develop so many units inside a year. Over a certain amount of time, you have general immunity from forty B when you're at ten percent of your housing stock is affordable.
And the other thing that the state does when they're considering forty B applications, like they're going to consider the one up in Prentice, is whether or not we're even trying. And it, you don't necessarily have to say, you know, look, we, we've got all these units coming online next year. They're, they're going to take into account the efforts that we've made and the efforts the Affordable Housing Trust has made in determining whether or not to allow someone's forty B development. So, you know, you gotta weigh all these things, you know, what is the value of being able to maintain this land for a, a definite and legitimate future use for the cemetery versus what we've got going on right now, which is a development going on up in Prentice. We've got... We've got several other places around town that forty B developers are looking at, that don't have an affrontage for normal developments. And so, these are the very difficult choices that we have to weigh.
I can appreciate that.
Question, the, 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 the smaller piece on the, what does that be, the south side of?
Well, Westerly, right, that'd be Westerly.
Westerly, okay. So, that, so that's part of the property that's in the hands of the, the cemetery department, correct?
I mean, the way I saw it delineated was, it's, it's twenty-five total.
Acres?
Yeah, the seven was the brush dump, the other eighteen was all the cemetery. That's how it was documented.
Okay, so there's no, so how much, how much acreage is on that, on that, kind of that side of the, the west side of?
There's a west side, it's under.
I don't know how it's break, broken down correctly.
Yeah, do we have any idea how much land that is?
The total parcel?
No, no, just that one piece where the cursor is.
Well, the whole thing's twenty-five, it looks. It looks like it would be about six.
It's, it's not.
And is that a hillside? I know it's flat from the road, but is there?
Well, does it slope up?
It's a big ledge.
And it's, and it's gonna be.
Yeah.
Why is there a little tiny blue piece? Isn't that the cemetery right there, anyway?
Yeah, that's, there's a, uh, uh, house, a little shack there that has, uh, water pumps and stuff.
Oh.
Um, and somewhere along the line, as many things happen over the course of, you know, a hundred years, those little slivers kind of get
Right, carved off.
Lost in translation.
So, would that be usable for the cemetery department, that, that smaller piece, you think, with the?
I would, I would say, no, that's, you know, it's slope, it's definitely all.
Cremation terrace. Can you do a cremation terrace on it? Possibility. We have, we have small pieces of each cemetery that are allotted for individual cremation barrels with flat markers instead of vertical stones. Those burials are much shallower. They don't require that kind of, you know, the space that you would buy at a traditional plot, so those types of little niche areas. Riverside has one right now, it's literally a terrace. You look at it, and you wouldn't think you could do anything there, but you can bury urns.
I'm not saying you couldn't even do both on this particular.
No, I would just answer his question, if that would be usable space.
No, no, I mean, because we could certainly put housing on the other side. I, I'm not too sure that you could put anything.
You could put some frontage lots there, right, probably before the slope started.
Yeah, I mean, the point of affordable housing is to provide the density and, and provide easement from all the restrictions of our normal, you know, zoning. So, you can make them really dense, you can pack them in an area, and they're just as valuable as affordable housing.
So, would it have to that town meeting to get it approved?
As far as, uh, um, we know right now, um, in order for it to be, um, an article, I think, would have to come out, a warrant article would have to come up, taking it out of, um, the cemetery, and then I'm not really sure the process after that. If it were to be sold or given to the Affordable Housing Trust or those type of things, that's, that's a culmination of articles.
Which is why I think that honestly, the twenty-five Worcester Street, at least, that doesn't have to, I know, but it doesn't have to come out of anybody else's hand, we could do all.
It's gotta do all the same process.
But you get to May, and it doesn't have to go from, you know, there's gonna be the argument of getting, taking it out of the cemetery.
I mean, honestly, if, if, if everybody here was telling me that it was that easy, that you should say, oh, well, it's just, let's give the Affordable Housing Trust Worcester Street, by all means, if we can all get a, you know, a show of hands and move that forward and give Worcester Street over to.
Yeah.
To.
Why don't we do, I mean, that'll get you guys going, let's get one project and see how it goes. I mean, we haven't even been through it yet, you know, we haven't.
I mean, if that was something, the Affordable Housing Trust is meeting on Wednesday, you, I mean, you're starting us at square one again. Um, I don't want to run into the same concerns at a certain point.
Yeah, Bruce, the, the problem is, is that we're, we're, we're trying to fix one problem, creating another problem for these guys.
Thirty years from now.
But still, still creating a problem. I'm young enough where I'm still gonna be alive thirty years.
It's not necessarily thirty years.
I'm gonna be here.
All right.
There's a hundred and twenty lots left.
We, we could be, I mean, at thirty years, you probably want to tackle it in twenty-five years, is anything what I see, we usually wait till right.
But if you had family buried there, all right, all those lots are sold, would you like to be buried in the same area?
I, I, I guess my, my argument is not about where, you know, we provide cemeteries and burial plots for, for individuals in town. I want that as well, okay? I, I, my thought on this particular thing is, in the immediate future, the things that impact the town as a whole, and from what I've seen over the past ten or fifteen years of its growth, and everybody here knows how it's grown over those, the past couple decades, is you can alleviate some of your overdevelopment of the town by getting in the driver's seat of forty B. It also has the benefit of providing you affordable housing for your teachers and your police and firemen, things of that nature, who are currently under normal salaries, can't really afford to live in this town. Every time I see like a, uh, a so-tier development or something like that, that drastically overpopulates an area that you really don't have any control over, um, it raises the demand on the services of the town. Every time you look at, say, Peter Adams's place on Wheeler Road, if you were immune to forty B, you could tell them that, no, you, you can't put that many single-family homes on that little lot of land, because all those homes are gonna put, place the demand on the services. This is what you've seen over the, the past, it's why your school budget is the way it is, it's why it's no surprise that there's over three thousand kids in the school system, type of thing. Saying that, that's not done. And even though I wish it started twenty years ago that we're getting in the driver's seat on this, I see value in being in the driver's seat in it now. Um, because it doesn't take much to, to massively overdevelop the town as we, as we look forward. That's why I'm weighing burial services in town over the next three decades.
You guys thinking about four hundred units on that piece of?
No, 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 no. We, our preliminary concept design is for, I think, forty-eight units there, apartments, so a couple of different apartment things.
But that still doesn't get us off that list.
Well, it'll get you into the safe harbor for a couple of years, and, you know, I.
Hey, where do we need to be in that safe harbor?
You need to be, yeah, you need to be at.
Three hundred and seventy-one mark.
So, ten, so ten percent of the three seventy-one, so ten percent of the ten percent, so thirty-seven units.
No, no, yeah, as you're to safe harbor, for overall immunity, you're ten percent of your housing stock, which.
Would it have to be built, or at least, or just?
No, so not necessarily built, um, but there's, there seems to me to be a continuum of what the state will, will take into consideration. So, if they're permitted and, and being built, that's one thing. If you're efforting it, then that will, the very least, go into their consideration for developments, the, uh, approval of forty B.
But if Prentice, if Prentice gets approved?
Same thing, that's all apartments.
Would, would that be the same?
No, it wouldn't. Well, it would, that would then go toward, yes, but it wouldn't get you to, I don't think, the safe harbor.
No, it does.
Or, or does it? Okay.
If he gets the, he gets everything that he asked for, not the thirty-one that he was approved for, if it's everything that he was asked for, we would have a safe harbor a year. That you can continue on that, say, you get forty-eight houses here, you're almost at a hundred units that are affordable, because they're all apartments.
So, the trade-off is like what you can control versus what you can't.
And how many, how many do you think you could fit on Worcester Street?
I don't know, we haven't done a design for it yet.
All right.
But I'm, I'm not, I'm not ruling out Worcester Street.
Yeah.
How much?
Two point nine.
I mean, ideally, if you, if you wanted to solve the problem of affordable housing, you develop inclusionary zoning that basically mandates that when someone comes in and they want to develop a place, that there has to be some affordable housing component on there. We haven't done that. That's how you get to the number.
We looked at it, nobody wanted to do it.
Yeah.
Well, I think just for the sake of moving this conversation along, I think, um, the, 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 the only way to get this thing moved to the right, to where you want to go, Bruce, is this has to, you have to get the cemetery commissioners to, uh, to appro, to accept.
No town meeting.
Or a town meeting.
No, town meeting has the authority on it, yeah.
So, where are we in? It's January?
But I guess what I would then close with, so I don't want me to move on from this, but I would like to work with you and see if we can look at other property that the town owns, or that may be coming up for sale, that's not conducive for doing anything, but maybe conducive for cemeteries. I don't want to just reject this project and say, this is your spot, because it is a prime piece of real estate. And then, when I say prime, it is, is as far as town-owned property.
No, twenty-five Worcester and Prentice are much better.
I, I would say you're way far off, but you, you know better than I do, so, and I would like to use both. So, because they're both very conducive.
And we're not turning a blind eye, just a town trying to meet the state's requirement, and all the benefits that yields. You know, we just were at a different, difficult spot trying to balance those two things. Now, if there were a, a place where a realistic opportunity for a cemetery expansion comes up, would our board at least entertain that and have a conversation? Absolutely, no question. You know, with this, when this came to us, it was, we have, we have an affordable housing, serious issue needs addressing right now. We just want the land kind of re-appropriated, and, you know, obviously, that's, that's the low-hanging fruit, but we were, you know, not, not ready to get there just yet. You know, we'd rather draw the conversation out and see what, if there's any kind of exchange that can be made, so we have somewhere else to go and not have to start from zero, kind of like where you guys are right now.
The value of this particular conversation is, if we didn't have this conversation, we'd be talking about this a year ago, and how we haven't done anything in a year, because we never reached out, never talked, and we just found this particular warrant article from fifty years ago. I want to avoid that, which is kind of why I wanted to do this tonight. I want to see these projects move forward. If you have a project that needs to move forward, then I want to see that too.
We both represent endeavors that are very hard to garner public support for.
Most certainly.
People do not want to invest in cemeteries, and they're not thrilled when they hear affordable housing is coming down the street from them.
Well, and that's, that speaks to, if we, you know, this land has already been set aside. You know, if, if we, if we don't, if we move this to the affordable housing, in thirty years from now, somebody's gonna stand up and try and buy a pro, piece of property for a million bucks for.
They're gonna have to, and they're gonna have to do it. That's the problem, you're gonna get, you're gonna get held over a barrel at that point. So, it's thirty years from now, but it's a huge problem for those thirty-year down.
And we can all, I, I just, we've all, we've all said it, let's develop a plan for twenty-five Worcester Street, get the ball rolling on that. We can always revisit this, I mean, it's not going anywhere. We can always look at it again, and maybe the, the industry is changing, and it's, you know, there's a piece of it that could be given up, if you guys are willing.
I just, I.
But I don't, I don't, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's financially a good idea to give up that parcel, because we know what's gonna happen down the road, at least as we sit here today.
Do, do we have any engineering or anything done for twenty-five Worcester Street? Any drawings, anything that was gonna go there?
With the Worcester Street.
No, I mean, usually the way the affordable housing.
I think for the fire station.
Only conceptual?
I think so. I wasn't here then, but I think that's.
Okay.
There was a whole host of arguments for and against when we were looking to put Super Park on there, and Jen can probably adjust it.
Biggest reason for Super Park is it's a slope, you want a property level.
Well, I mean, that's not, it's a prime piece of real estate, it's not the best for a recreation.
No, but it's in the hill, doesn't it?
I mean, for a cemetery, you need, you need decent topography, you need upland, you need access.
An easy diggin'.
An easy diggin'. So, it's not, you know, we, you can't go in a swamp, you can't go on a, on a vertical, you know, a, a ten percent grade. I mean, it's gotta be.
If you try to do it in a residential area, you're gonna run into zoning problems and objections.
Right.
You're gonna run into that when you do this, too.
Yes, you are.
So.
If you're doing one on top of the other, you get to plot a poltergeist.
Where it sets, it sets me back is that we, we continually, we, Affordable Housing Trust has spent money engineering this particular site. We spent a lot of time, we invested a lot of energy, and I would love if twenty-five Worcester Street was gonna work, but I don't want to chase my own tail again for another year, looking at another site and getting another, um, something else coming up.
What about Fallett Street Park?
Uh, for Worcester.
Is, is there any, well, for either one, is there any usable? Every time we tried to use that, there was butterflies flying around, and Linda from Conservation said, I couldn't do anything down there, but she's not here anymore. Um, is there any, is there any, uh, it's pretty flat.
Yeah, well, I, the lot of the street has the lease on the majority of it, it's ours.
Right.
Uh, but the front of it, 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 I'm sure they have wellhead restrictions for how close you can build to it.
And there's no sewer. I mean, there's obviously water, there's no sewer, there's no gases, you know what I'm saying?
But has, I, I mean, we have these touch base meetings, is Affordable Housing Trust, when's the last time you guys had like a, a, a Affordable Housing Trust Board of Selectmen site selection idea meeting? Has that happened?
There's, of the, we've done an assessment of pretty much all the properties in town.
Yeah.
And we kind of weighed them against each other ad nauseam, about which ones are conducive to being built. We picked this particular site. We got some blessing from the selectmen to go out and spend a little money and see if it was gonna work. We talked about, you know, if we were gonna pay for it, you know, buy it from the town, or if it was gonna be, you know, and, and then it kind of stalled, and then six months later, we did more diligence, we found this particular piece. I would be, I'd be more than happy to spend time, and I'm sure the Affordable Housing Trust would be happy to spend time on the, the diligence that we've done on other town properties to kind of roll through them and see if there's something that's conducive that we can take that particular restriction off and move it over. Because you guys don't even know if it's conducive for a graveyard now anyways. You've never done any site work or studies or.
Did, I did site work at the brush dump, when I worked for the town of Grafton, you know, forty years ago. All right? That, where that fenced-in area is, it's all gravel. Nothing but gravel.
So, that from the, uh, basically halfway down is the brush dump, and that was also.
That fenced-in area.
And I don't see town meeting transferring it either. I mean, I think it'd be a, you never know.
Hard to know. I mean, the brush dump itself, is that conducive to being a, uh, I don't know, this, these.
Just the fenced-in area, you can't go up on top of the hill. Build your affordable housing there, at seven acres, right?
I can hear the jokes now, you're burying me in the dump.
No, build the affordable housing there.
No, I thought it meant easy for cemeteries.
I'm, I'm not.
Well, we can have the affordable housing debate, we don't have to do it with these guys, I mean, we sort of have had the meeting.
Yep, guys, thank you for coming.
Thanks, I appreciate it. Thanks, guys.
But, um, to that point, maybe we should, you know,
Reach out.
Reach out, have, we've had touch base meetings with how, all the groups, Affordable Housing hasn't, I don't think it's come in yet, huh, have they?
Not, not, not since we've.
So, yeah, so I know Dan's here now, but we'll, we'll get you guys on the agenda and have you come back in.
What, what do you want from us when we come back?
You know what, can I speak to that, Bruce? Can we, here's what I would like to see happen, just, this is just my preference. You guys, if you guys could drop a list of the properties that you've, you've discussed, and the pros and cons of each, and then present that to us, so that we can come in informed about what you guys have talked about. I would like us to have that meeting and not leave that meeting until we pick the property that we can agree on, that we could put support behind, and just get something going.
And to that point, too, I, I mean, the, the things that you guys ma, you know, found pros and cons, you know, we might as a, as a, as a, as a board, uh, not agree, right, with what you, you said, this is a plus, and this is a plus, and this is, these are the negatives for it. And we might say, well, those aren't really negatives, man, like, let's, let's work around that and let's get this done, you know, so.
By and large, I haven't seen that type of cooperation and productivity out of these two boards for the duration I've been on them.
It's a new year.
It's a new year, and we're, we're, I'm literally reaching out. Dan's right there, I don't, are you still here?
Yeah.
So, I'm talking to the chair of the, the Affordable Housing Trust right now, saying, hey. Come in and let's, uh, let's do, the goal is what Ed said. And, uh, we'll take it from there.
All right.
I, I, I don't know why you, you would have a prob, I mean, am I stepping on your toes, Bruce?
You're not, you're not stepping on my toes, I just, I feel we've been here before, but as if you will, no, it's twenty nineteen.
You just said we haven't met with them in how long? So, I mean, I'm, we're trying to do the right thing, we're trying to move forward. All right, um, what do we got? We got signed cable studio, uh, contract?
Yeah, we had a number.
J.J. Cardosi?
We had a few bids that came back in, Cardosi was the lowest and best, uh, the highest was one point one five six. Lowest was Cardosi at eight oh seven nine hundred. Uh, I should thank Andy for his help in, I appreciate it pitching in with this, with the Cable Advisory Committee to redo this building and get it off of the tax rules, if you will, and get it resolved for the cable studio. So, we're on pace, on budget, using cable fees to pay the, the debt service that was approved at the town meeting, and we want to get the board to approve the contract.
Until, when is this project gonna be done? What, what is the date?
Talk about timing?
Yeah.
About four months. When I open my mouth, I feel I should stand up.
Uh, it's, it's about a, it's about a four, four and a half month project, so it's pretty quick.
Great. And so, we're, we're thinking by May, April, May, these guys will be moved in, ready to go?
Yeah, moving around the end of May.
Awesome.
And I think we had about fourteen general contractor bids on this, a lot of interest. Good, good time of the year, it's a good indoor, indoor job, so it was a lot of good, a lot of good competitive bidding.
So, would you like motion?
Yes, please.
I moved the chair to, I moved the chair to sign the cable studio contract with the, with, uh, J.J. Cardosi for the cable studio renovation project at twenty-six Providence Road.
Sorry, I'm sorry, I gotta recuse.
Oh, you do?
Yeah, I'm still back in the running for that building.
All right, go ahead.
I apologize.
No, no, no problem.
You want me to leave?
Nope, you can stay right there. All right.
I, I'll second the motion, I just have one question.
Sure.
You said it was good bidding. How close was the, um, the second, the second bid?
It's, it was on, on one of the pages.
Was it close?
Yeah, it was close. Yeah, there was a cluster, um.
It was like twelve thousand bucks.
Really? And these guys are, I mean, have we done any due diligence at?
Yeah, they're definitely qualified, they've done a bunch of projects, um, much bigger than this, and so, yeah, they're, I think they're, they're well-suited to do it.
Good.
And they've been enthusiastic so far, so.
Great.
Motion was made and seconded, further discussion? Motion was made and seconded, further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
I just said did for you to sign, not us, so.
Yeah, just for the change. You authorized it.
All right, we are gonna also, uh, vote to authorize chairman to sign the chapter ninety request for Stowe Road.
Ooh, so moved. Good, we're finally gonna do it.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion. So, this is just for that, uh-
Culvert.
The Culvert over there.
Yeah, we, we applied twice for our small bridge grant program through the state. Denied both times, I cannot tell you why. But we applied twice, we gotta know, and the state actually told us to put those Jersey berries on it, which doesn't make sense because of the weight, but we did it because they told us to, so we're gonna make application, and if you approve it and we get approval, we'll do a contract to have the design done and we'll go out to bid to have it done, hopefully by the fall.
All right, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, we're gonna vote to sign, uh, an agreement for, with Bayside Engineering for the Stowe Road Culvert.
Just one question on that, just, any idea what that's gonna cost?
I will tell you, in two thousand and two, we're talking about kicking the can down the road, when we were gonna do it, it was eighty-five thousand.
Just for the engineering?
No, for the total cost.
Oh, my God.
So.
Oh, now I'm saying just the engineering?
Now, just the engineering. Three, three times that.
Just the engineering itself now, fifty-five thousand.
Would be.
Um, so, just the engineers. Total cost of the project in two thousand and two was eighty-five grand, so.
Hmm.
Okay, sorry.
Time to lay money.
Go ahead. No, go ahead.
Okay, I moved the board vote to sign the professional engineering service agreement with Bayside Engineering Incorporated for the Stowe Road-
Wait, wait, you guys just authorized me to sign it, and then now we're voting to sign it, right?
No, once the chapter ninety-
No, once, that's chapter ninety, this is engineering.
Okay, yeah, yeah, sorry, my, my bad. I'm, I'm looking at the agreements and not the agenda, my bad. Uh, motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We have to, uh, vote to create a gift account for Grafton's Community Emergency Response Team.
You take a sub move on that one, too?
What, I, sure, I'll second that.
Motion made and seconded, add discussion.
I just, I'm curious, what do they need a-
They got a donation to the, to the cert for Claire Garabedian, who, who runs that under emergency management, so she had no mechanism to take that fund in, so you create a gift account, with that fund can come into, and then they can expend it for training, for other safety apparatus they would do for emergency management, you know, batteries, lights, jackets, combs, things like that. Things for the shelter.
Okay. I'm, oh, you already have a motion, I'm sorry.
Yeah, motion made and seconded, discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And last, it's a vote to sign the lease for the temporary library location at Saint Andrews Church.
Yes, finally, this is here. We went out to bid, we had one bidder, uh, under thirty B procurement laws, if you only get one bidder, you can negotiate with that bidder. Their bid originally for Saint Andrews for a per month expense was ninety-six hundred dollars, which was way over budget. We do have a budget of about, did Andy leave me?
He did.
One forty, a hundred and forty thousand for, uh, relocation and moving of the library for its temporary home, so we negotiated with Saint Andrews, and we got to six thousand dollars a month, so we saved thirty-six. Um, the term of the lease will run from April two thousand nineteen to August number one two thousand twenty. We will pay all the utilities associated with the building, just as in any triple net lease. Um, in the lease, if you read it, in certain sections, it talks about municipal purposes only, so the use doesn't change, which helps them when they go to resell it. Uh, we inspected all the mechanical systems in the building, they're all fairly new and they're all in good shapes, we're not worried about those failing over the nineteen months to or in the building. Uh, obviously, we'll be responsible for snow and ice removal and general maintenance, which we'll do with, uh, the crews we currently have. Either party can terminate the contract within sixty days of written notice, which we thought was reasonable for both sides. Hopefully, it doesn't have to happen unless we need to move early, because the library is built faster than we anticipated. And then we'll make reasonable accommodations to allow the building to be shown for real estate purposes. So, those are the highlights inside that document.
What did you say about the taxes?
Uh, it's triple net, there'll be no tax because of municipal use.
Okay. And for the insurance?
Insurance, we'll cover it as if it's our building. For catastrophic loss, they have, uh, overarching insurance for, you know, struck by lightning, catches fire, but we have individually insured as well.
Do I have a motion?
I'm ready to sign the lease for the temporary location of the library to be at Saint Andrews Church, is there a party, what's the other party?
I think it's the Diocese of Worcester, is it not? Saint Andrews?
There's a-
Episcopal missions of Worcester Mass.
Church?
No.
That'll be the landlord.
Is, yeah, I don't, I don't have it in front of me, I just tie up the pass.
That's all right.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, discussion on the motion?
Tim to sign.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Hey, Simon, I need to amend my motion a little bit.
Oh.
I need to, we, well, we authorized Tim to sign the lease.
Okay.
Is that what it is, is it?
For Saint Andrews Church.
Second.
Motion made and seconded, town administrator to sign the lease. Uh, discussion on the motion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Thanks, Becca.
Perfect.
Um, here we go. Those to sign. Moving on, we have selectmen reports, TA reports.
So, we could do guys-
Um, any selectmen reports?
Yeah, I have a fairly long and extensive report from the Affordable Housing Trust. If you guys wanna dedicate about fifteen minutes, I can go after you guys or not.
Are you serious?
No, I'm not serious.
Oh, oh.
I have one if this is done. Um, the open space and recreation master plan committee met last night, um, we're still making progress forward, uh, it's, it's, we're getting close to the final draft, and once that is, um, completed, we'll come and present here at a meeting to the future.
Pell Farm as a cemetery?
Can you use Pell Farm as a cemetery?
That's an interesting question to have.
I don't know. But it has a conservation restriction, we have to read the conservation restriction.
Okay.
Um, so, that's moving forward. Uh, Joe is putting in a ton of work since they are short-staffed, and he's doing a lot of, a lot of stuff, and, but it was a small group, a small working group, but making progress. So, should have it soon, next couple months.
Cool. Greg, Ed?
Uh, I just have a question for you, Mr. Chair. Do we have a, a date to meet with, um, CIPC yet?
We do not, so I spoke to, uh, Peter Carlson the other day. Um, he was thinking that maybe we, uh, kind of wait, because it's budget season right now, just go through all of this, and then, um, after you guys meet to, uh, go forward with, uh, this year's capital requests.
Okay.
Come in when we're less busy, and then we can have a, really, uh, you know, good discussion on the future of capital and all that kind of, or that committee.
Okay.
And its future with capital.
Okay.
And maybe a longer discussion at, at that, too, so.
Sure.
Wait, when is that?
Uh, after budget season, so, well, maybe in April or, or May, right before town meeting. Um, I don't have anything, so, you wanna go ahead?
Yeah, just, I, I wanted to give the, the board a snapshot, this is not a definitive plan, as there are things like state aid that are still up in the air, there's a lot of good discussion about funding education more adequately from the governor, so, uh, but I did wanna at least give you an update on the budget, both, um, year-to-date, and I realize the TRICOM committees still have not met either, but in, in terms of getting a baseline budget and the revenues estimated, to see where we're at, that's what I'm gonna try to give you a snapshot of. But I did wanna take you through fiscal, um, nineteen for revenues, we, I'm not gonna give you details on it, but we are right on pace for the fifty percent mark in terms of collection. Uh, state aid comes in in quarters, obviously, tax bills go in in quarters, our motor vehicle excise tax, which is about two point seven million, the biggest commitment goes in February, so that'll go out in February, and we anticipate that'll not, uh, that'll meet its estimate. In terms of expenses, we're at fifty percent, right where we should be. Health insurance is on pace to hold that number, so it doesn't look like we'll need any adjustments to health insurance. Um, retirees renewed, what did they renew at?
Ten?
Yep, no, retirees are in January.
Yeah.
But it was within, it was in the, the tolerance, if you will, within the five or six percent that we were carrying for them, so that's fine for their renewal as well. Um, state, uh, real estate is still at a ninety-nine, ninety-eight point five, ninety-eight percent collection rate, so we still don't have any issues with delinquencies, if we do, it's minor. The other thing we watch is trash and recycling, and those numbers, both from a revenue standpoint for bag sales and from, um, tipping and transportation costs, those are on pace. So, those are kind of like the major highlights, that overall fiscal nineteen is fine, and we are, uh, on pace both in collections and, and spending. Obviously, we do the best we can not to spend what is entirely appropriated to the town, we try to save as much as we can as we go through. Um, so, having said that, FY twenty, uh, the request that came in exceeded revenue estimates by seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars. Um, how that money is split up, there are some revenue enhancements and we had to make some reductions. So, all new money for fiscal twenty, the estimate giving the, the variable of the twelve million dollars in state aid, uh, is two point one million dollars of new money, and how that'll break out under the scenario, um, twenty-five percent will go to unclassified, which will be health insurance, which, that health insurance line will go up about seven percent, so that's five hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars. Town departments, uh, we had to make some reductions from the request, it were fairly substantial. Total town departments, this is all town, non-school, un, non, unclassified, will go up less than one percent, and they will get two point eight percent of all new money, totaling sixty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-one. Uh, having to fit all of those requests in, uh, the school departments increased to balance the budget, barring state aid being up or down at four and a half percent of one five seven five three thirteen, so one million five hundred seventy-five three thirteen, that's seventy-two percent of all new money for education, that's two million, of the two million one eighty-five five thirty-two.
How much percent, what's the percentage?
Seventy-two.
So, we didn't have a, an easy task, we had to meet-
Was it, that's at a request of four point five percent?
Their request was five four seven.
Four seven.
So, it was one point nine and change.
All right, but you didn't run that here in the numbers you gave us.
No, it's, it's quick math to figure out how much they would have needed, but if I can't give you ten, I can't, I can't show you what I can give you eleven. So, in my eyes, I had to back into what I couldn't give them. But given the fact that I just have the responsibility of giving a balanced budget, and this is, again, a snapshot, and there's a big puzzle to be put together, this is just pieces of information to put that puzzle together. So, I'll show you again on this slide, uh, this is how the percentages of revenues, uh, are broken out, so you have the FY eighteen actuals, the nineteen budget, which is where we are today, the request, and then you have the town administrator's recommendation, and then the dollar change, nineteen to twenty, and then the percent change. So, general government, so that's pretty much everybody in this building, with the exception of council on aging, board of health, Department of Public Works. Um, that's a, a, a reduction of twenty-five thousand from what was requested, well, actually from nineteen, the request is significantly lower, I only did it from the actual nineteen budget. Public safety, reduction of twenty-nine. Public Works, increase of seven thousand bucks. SOR department, it's an enterprise fund, so there's no tax dollars to go to that, that's a reduction as well, mostly from efficiencies gained in the new plant that they have. Uh, health and human resources, uh, human services, this is the library, board of health, not library, excuse me, council on aging, and the health department. So, those increases largely are there for staff, union, and then the increase for the alliance services for a board of health. In culture and recreation, we have what would be the library and recreation department, that's a fifty-nine thousand increase, or five, five percent overall. Um, education's the million five seven five three thirteen, and then unclassified's the five, five hundred fifty-five thousand in, in column E. And then the debt service is our biggest driver. Not fact in it, when I talked about the new money, we have to raise this for debt service, but I broke that up, it's not general fund money I can use for anything else, so I gotta raise it anyways. So, that's what, what everybody should note with line nine is fiscal twenties tax bill will be significantly higher than nineteenth, because you have to pay for the debt service for things that are coming on, like DBW and Lake Library. So, that's what that's accounted for, that is still an estimate, because we're not long-term borrowed for either project at this point. So, the budget change right now, six point seven percent, you'll notice in column G, it doesn't total ninety-seven, ninety, a hundred percent, it's ninety-four point seven, because you have articles that you raise outside, did, things like the road stabilization account, that would be part of that, six percent. Um, so, when we met with staff, we did reduce requests, um, by two hundred and seventy-three thousand, so that was cut from requests by meeting with folks. We were still short by sixty thousand, so yesterday we instructed all staff to cut point six percent, that's what that sixty thousand delta represented, to get balance, we asked everyone to cut another point six percent. Uh, general government, public safety, and SOR are all have a reduction from last year, from nineteen to the current year that we're in. And again, the largest increases are unclassified debt and for the school department. So, there'll be other proposals that'll have to come forward to get this balanced, this budget to balance. So, we usually have police cruisers inside of the, of the department, of the police department. The proposal would be to use free cash to purchase those, or don't purchase them at all, those are, those are your options. Um, for the EDC coordinator, we funded it, uh, through a warrant article, I would look to fund it through a warrant article again, to have it as the second year of the pilot. Again, free cash would be the target for that, and I'll take you through those numbers in a second. There were some capital requests inside the operating budget of the fire department that we can move to capital because they meet the criteria, namely valves and fire hoses to the, I don't know how many feet that was, was it five thousand feet or five hundred? It was, it was a significant footage, so we could move that, so we were able to reduce their budget. We talked about the sixth service with the IT committee, there are server replacements in the, in the plan that we would look to move to the capital plan and move it out of operating. And then there's things that the board is aware of that just needs to keep in mind moving forward. The police union contract is headed for mediation, there could be significant cost there if we don't resolve it before it gets to Boston.
What is that?
Well, we're still in the preliminary phases of mediation just with the management and labor council in this building.
Okay.
Before it goes to the tribunal, if you will. So we hope we can get a result, our next meeting is the eleventh, it's Friday. Other pieces of free cash that we always knew, the assessing department has to do rebows every three years and they'll need a fifty thousand dollar rebound for all the properties that we usually do a Warren article for. But those are just pieces that I just wanted to make you aware of. We do propose a, a small bag fee increase, we did one two years ago, we skipped this year, we'd look to do one for next year. It'll help us budget or fund that gap. A reminder, chapter seventy, as I said, the governor's touting a new model for school funding, hopefully that comes to fruition. Seven, twelve million dollars of our budget comes from the state, so a lot depends on what we get from them. Hasn't been very robust in previous years, been one percent, two percent, so we'll have to wait and see, but that's just another piece of the puzzle. So we'll need significant reductions in budget requests for operations and some revenue enhancements to present the balanced budget to the finance committee, which I believe will happen in February, probably the second or third week. We do look to have a budget presentation in its entirety to the board for the twenty-second of January. So you'll have a complete assessment, which hopefully you might, you'll talk about TRICOM and how that meeting will play out. And we did analysis on, you know, what the total overall shortfall is from what the request was. So that number, if we wanted to talk about that with the revenue enhancements, we would, you know, you would need six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars if you were to meet everybody's request, including the schools at their original request. For the capital plan, we did set aside out of the million nine or two million bucks of free cash, nine hundred and fifty thousand for the capital plan. There are some budget considerations with that. If we did the cars, the EDC, and the revow that I mentioned on the previous page, that would leave us a balance of free cash after we do the capital plan of nine hundred and fifty thousand, of about eight hundred and fifty thousand of free cash. Right around where we always want to be, we want to have a million, but if we go under by a hundred grand or a hundred and fifty grand, we've been okay with that. Our finance committee's been okay with it. So that's under the scenario, if it was to play out, just like I presented, that's where that free cash number would be. Other pieces with that, police mediation, snow ice, it's been good so far. And then the appeal with the ZBA or deal to be made with Sotier, that could be a costly endeavor as well. But things to consider as, as we go forward. Things that are rolling off the capitalist are the fire truck, what was it, the heavy rescue, that was a hundred and twenty-three thousand a year? And then the unit vents, that rolled off at sixty-nine two sixty-six. So those pieces, we would look to replace with other kind of standard leases, like the, the servers that I mentioned earlier. We'd want to replace those things, and there's a fire, another fire truck to come on as well. So did I miss any highlights on the budget, Becca? I know you put a lot of effort into this piece. A couple of other just quick announcements, there was, you know, when they signed the Americans with Disabilities Act, there was supposed to be a transition plan for every community to identify all of the transitional areas you should make handicap accessible, identifying those areas. So we applied for a grant from the state office of public safety.
Mass office and disability.
So we got a thirty-five thousand dollar grant to do that transition study, it was supposed to do in nineteen ninety-seven, it was, it was a long, long time ago that it was signed. So we finally have that, we will do that inventory of non-ADA compliant areas, so we'll use that thirty-five thousand for that. Just a reminder, the fire department staffing study, we'll have that on the twenty-second as well, so I'll try to keep that meeting with two really big items, but that'll happen on that day as well. DPW site work is underway, you probably all know that, the handicap ramp project that we had funded at town meeting through the capital plan, all the bids came back way more than what we had appropriated. I cannot give you a reason as to why, but we are trying to find a way to use BVT or other means or methods to Blackstone Valley Tech to, to build those ramps. But right now, it's, it's not happening.
Ramps for what?
The handicap ramps, the metal ones that are all backed.
Oh, right, yeah, the wood ones up front, really?
Yeah, so we had, we, what do we get, sixty thousand to do them? I don't know how much we got.
We got seventy-five.
All right.
Cost us like six grand to have an architect design. The lowest bid we got was a hundred grand for the construction.
For three ramps?
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, it's, it's mind-boggling, I just can't, I can't describe it to you. But we're not doing them, obviously, because it's just, it's too much. The garage, another capital project Riverside, we had a, an appropriation for a garage at Riverside in addition. And Paul's not here anymore, but he came up with the idea that maybe internally, because it's leaning against an existing building, that we could do it ourselves internally, so we're gonna try and take that on again with the help of BVT in terms of labor. We're gonna try and build that, because it's just a poor foundation and a frame construction, so it can't be, it's a shed, it's thirty-eight by fourteen, something like that. We're gonna give it a go.
Where's this going?
Riverside. So it's a long, long overdue addition to house equipment. Green Communities, you know we were awarded a hundred and fifty-seven thousand Green Communities last year, we spent all of that on a variety of projects. Becca can tell you the particulars in terms of what we can save with all those pieces, and not guaranteed savings, but the grant paid for all of them. And we'll go through a competitive round in March to do LED streetlights, so we can further reduce that electric cost for those non-mated utilities. And do we have an update on Route thirty? Oh, the drilling and borings are next week. So yeah, the borings for Route thirty for that SOR line project will start next week, it'll take two days of drilling. So we'll be ready to, to have complete bid specs out on the street by April, and hopefully we can start construction by late summer. But those are the, those are the highlights in the past month, I guess, have I missed anything?
All right, we have any correspondence?
Actually, I just have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Just a point of clarification, maybe I wasn't following this correctly, you had seven hundred and eighteen thousand dollars in excess requests?
Yeah, over and above what we had for revenue.
Okay, so then it said there was, you said there was two hundred and seventy-three thousand dollars of reduction in requests, right? So are we still, is there a delta there that's still?
No, what has to happen though, there has to be revenue enhancement, the board needs to vote on, i.e. bag fees.
Oh, I see, okay.
The seven hundred and eighteen excess, does, that doesn't include the, the delta between the four point five percent per school, education, and the?
The six, the six thirteen that we would need does include them at five six, at five point four seven.
That, so the seven hundred and eighteen that you mentioned includes that?
That was them at.
Thank you.
Okay.
So school got reduced down to four five, which closed that gap significantly, and then on top of that, department's cut in addition of two fifty.
Two seventy-three ninety-one.
I was just trying to see how you approached everything, that's.
Well, they actually be three ten, because it's sixty plus the two seventy-three.
The point six, yeah.
And the unclassified, just because I know that people are always asking me, and I, I forget, I know it's healthcare, but what else is in the unclassified?
Town, town insurance for all the buildings, all the vehicles, workers comp, that's six hundred and forty thousand.
Okay.
Health insurance, retirement pensions, a million four, is it that I know, all right, so a million eight.
Okay.
And then health insurance is four point six.
Yeah, there's other little auditions in there.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what did you carry for, would you carry for health, six percent for healthcare?
Eight.
You did eight?
You carry eight?
Eight right now, twenty.
You think you'll be there?
Yeah, I hope it'll be lower, but I needed some margin, because I haven't had any margin for any qualifying events for someone to come on, or new hire that, that someone might have. So I've had no margin, thank God, halfway through the year, we've had, we're right on pace to spend exactly what we budgeted.
Yeah, all right. Do you think anything, anything that's gonna buckle that over the next year?
No, because we have the high deductible plan in place, we should be, according to the consultants, and we should be okay to be in the low single digits. Eight is not a low single digit in my mind, but that's the number they, they projected it'll be.
And when do we know, when that, when, when do we know that number?
The health insurance number, they have claims data.
It's February, renewal information.
Yeah, I just, I was trying to do the math on that renewal piece, the retirees too, but yeah.
Because last year we only had one bidder, right?
We, we chop it, we, we may or may not chop it depending on what the claims are. Because we only got one bidder with this go-around after we left the GIC, because there's no claims, claims data that we could give to those bidders. Now we have this one year of.
You think that will improve our situation, might get more bidders this year, you know, lost runs?
They showed me the lost runs a month ago, and I thought the insurance company was making money. But no one seemed to like my analysis, but that, we haven't had those discussions with both the insurer and the consultant.
All right.
All right, any correspondence?
No.
All right, so the only piece I have for discussion is this TRICOM meeting. Peter Carlson and I and Sue Robbins have been emailing back and forth and talking. After the school committee came out with their five point four seven request, and then Tim had explained to them that it's probably more like four five, that's where we're at. They were hoping to maybe get all three committees in the, in the same room together, kind of have a follow-up from our October talk, and kind of go over the, the five point four seven and where they're at, and, and just kind of present that to, to the board's selectmen. And then just see what we want to do with that information.
Do you have a date?
Well, they wanted to do it on January thirtieth, they wanted the school committee to host, host it upstairs in FinCom room. So it seems to me that it, they wanted to be a school committee's meeting.
Yes, go ahead.
I told them, I told them we could meet down here, not a big deal, and Peter seemed insistent on meeting upstairs.
So the thirtieth is a Wednesday, so nobody regularly meets on that day?
Exactly, so everyone should be free, or, or I shouldn't say that, nobody, nobody's meeting on that day, I don't know if everybody's free.
FinCom is the only one that sometimes meets, you know.
I'm free.
My opinion, they, they should come here, they should, we should schedule them for the twenty-second, that, that, you know, Tim has given him, them, the department, the budget like he's given to every department. And if they, you know, if they have some concerns and they want to talk to us about it, then they should come here. They're the ones asking to meet, they should come to us, and we can talk about it. As far as FinCom being involved, I don't see the need to have them there, they're welcome to come and participate as individuals, but to have FinCom involved with a discussion about what Tim has budgeted for the school department and if they have concerns or if they want to come and see if there's, you know, if the rock, if the blood is all out of the rock or not, then we can have that discussion with them, but it's got nothing to do with FinCom, so I don't. And we've had meetings with the three boards before, and I, I don't think they've been very productive. So I think if the school committee wants to come in, they should come in, and we should talk to them about it.
I would guess that the value of the TRICOM meeting is similar to when we proposed it for the override the last time, because all three committees were in the same room to.
We're not even talking about an override, though.
They're going to.
They're going to.
Well, we haven't talked about any override, and there's been no information to support an override yet. So I think, you know, if they're gonna come in and that's what they're gonna talk about, they haven't talked about it yet. School department, the school committee has not talked about it yet, so.
I would imagine that with department requests that are seven hundred thousand dollars more than the money we've got, somebody's gonna want to eventually say, okay, well, with that, you're looking at some sort of reduction in services or staff or both, so somebody at some point's gonna want to know where we're going with this. I would imagine that the finance committee's gonna want to know, because part of their job is trend monitoring, and school committee's certainly gonna want to know. I mean, listen, my, my own opinion, you guys decide what you want, but I humbly would go anywhere that anybody asks me to go, given the state of affairs. If I want to go upstairs, I'll go upstairs, if I want to go downstairs, I'll come downstairs, if I want to do it in my living room, I can do it there too, everybody's invited over, I don't care, wherever you guys want to do it.
I just think they're the ones that, that are asking, they're not happy with the number, or they have issues that they want to talk to us about, and certainly willing to meet with them, they should come to our meeting, they're the one, it's their ask. So I'm out enough at night, if they want to come and talk to us, I'll be here on the twenty-second, and that's just how I feel about it, so.
Well, so in, in December, when we were emailing, they had kind of put up a, a poll, you know, when's the best time everyone can meet? January ninth was a good day for everybody, but I had been under the weather and I, you know, I didn't communicate fast enough with you guys on that, so I wanted to bring it up today to talk about it, but the secondary date for them was the thirtieth. I think the reason they didn't want to do it on a Tuesday is because school committee meets on that day regularly. But I can, I can, you know, I, I don't know how the board feels.
I'm happy with the thirtieth, trying to find a date to bring everybody in the room at, at one time, I see the value in it, so. We gotta have the discussion at certain point anyways, I wanted it months ago, so.
Well, yeah, I think the reason we didn't is because we needed to know where we, both sides were at right now. So we know Tim's number, we know their, their number, and then, you know, we can sit down and talk about what that delta means.
Yep.
I mean, to me, I'm more concerned, I mean, we're giving them four and a half percent to the tune of one point five million and change, and they want to talk about that. We have, we have sixteen departments, and a lot of them are, are level funding, very little increase or some of them, you know, that are taking cuts. I don't know how those departments, you know, those departments report directly to you, Tim, I don't know how they feel about that, but.
They're happy, but there's nothing, that's kind of balance, there's nothing like that.
And they're not, they're not sending requests to come and talk to us, so how are they doing that?
They can send requests to come and talk to us.
I'm, they can, yeah, but they don't, they just, they just, they just figured out.
Well, no, the department had sent a request to the board to meet about their budget.
Yeah.
Seems a lot, but.
Well, they'll meet about it with finance committee.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, and then Tim will get the report and report back to us, you know. I think part of the value of having that TRICOM meeting is that we can have that dialogue with the school committee to say, hey, listen, you know, we're not just talking about education reduction or cuts, we're talking about level staffing, police officers, and people that work in this building. You're talking about a lowering morale, you're talking about not being able to hire and attract the best staff members that we would like to, to provide services for the town, and that, you know, from there, like Bruce said, somebody is going to say, okay, well then, if the difference is cut or level fund and raise revenue, someone's gonna say, let's raise revenue, and that's, I think that's where this conversation's going. And so that's gonna be helpful, I think, because if, you know, if not everybody's on board with raising revenue and we don't know what that word is, then I think we should have that discussion publicly.
Can we get, if they want to meet with us, and I still think they should come here, but I, can we get some information from them? Like what, what they want to talk about? Why they want, I'm assuming that they want to talk about more, getting more revenue, I guess, right? That's what they want to talk about?
Yeah, wasn't Peter gonna provide projections?
So I, I want, I want information, I'm not gonna go in there and, you know.
I think they're meeting tonight about their five-year need, they're meeting tonight to discuss what their five-year projection need would be, so you'd have that. But there'll be, there'll be a lot of volume to, to every year from now.
Right. So got in Peter and Sue, they'll, they can set an agenda so we're not sitting there spending.
Yeah, I think, I think the, the, the main point will be to hear what they have to say about their, their, their ask, right? I mean, because it's a, really, it's a simple decision, right? At the end of the day, they're asking for something, we can always say, well, you know, I think we're, we're sticking to our guns, we're gonna go with four and a half. Or we could say, to Ed's point, I know, that doesn't look good to us, we need to raise revenue. And I think that we need to see where that conversation goes, and when we talk about raising revenue, is it strictly just for the schools? There's a whole delta with other, other departments in this town. I mean, I think the number, we, we, what did we say the number was, seven hundred something thousand, so?
Yeah, all, all total, when we started to make the reductions from the request at the base of five two five. So there's, there's some variant in there, because I had to get, again, I, I did the analysis based on the original five two five, and then I had to back down when I had a, when I had that huge delta, I had to make.
And, you know, and then we, and maybe it might be an opportunity where we have, you know, could have a discussion about other things that.
Shouldn't be, just for school committee, if we're having a TRICOM meeting, if you have something that you cut out of this budget that you feel that the town is lesser for.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
But that's not what we do with finance committee, that, that's, we provide them with a balanced budget. They don't have anything to do with that process, I don't know why we're.
That's not true, finance, finance committee hears from the department heads, and they, they come in on Saturdays, I sat through these for, for years. And the department heads come in and they justify their budget, and they tell you why, for instance, that recreation got a, what was it, twelve percent increase in their budget last year, and then why they needed it. And at any given time, finance committee could have said, no, you know, we're not comfortable with that number, but they would have got their butts shellacked by this group for doing that, and they never did. So, you know, this is, this is our process, where there are multiple parties that have interests in, in stakes in the budget outcome every year. Finance committee's one of them, school committee's the other, there's nothing wrong with talking to them.
I, I know how the process works.
I didn't mean to suggest you did.
All right, so, but we, we need to provide them with a balanced budget, and then, you're right, the department heads go in and they say what they, what they need, what they got, if it's gonna work, whatever those discussions are, those happen, and finance committee vets those, and they make a recommendation. But it's, it's, you know, it's ours and Tim's budget, and we need to provide that for them, and then they do the due diligence. We're not there yet, we haven't created the budget yet, so to have them in early, I think is, is, I think we're, we're going around the process.
Yeah, but Craig.
And, and, and for a school committee, I mean, you know, I hope they see what the other, you know, sixteen departments are doing here. You know, it's always a school department, always, they're always, you know, it's, it's never enough, it's never enough. They, they need to understand what the other departments are doing, and I don't think they have an appreciation for that with how little Tim is making, you know, is, is having them receive in, in increases every year so that we can give the lion's share of the school department, you know. But, you know, we get departments at negative numbers, and they're in and they want another three hundred grand, so, you know.
I understand what you're saying, my thing is, if we were, if we were to forego a TRICOM meeting and just wait until the budget process played itself out and finance committee hears from the department heads about what their requests are, by the time that happens, we'll be well into the budget season, and there would be very little point into having a TRICOM meeting. We'd be readying the budget for presentation and meeting into approval. And at that point, a couple of different things are gonna happen, there are gonna be people who are gonna be unhappy and upset, both on the town side and the school side. And we'll have unnecessarily created unrest and angst among those various groups, and we could have addressed it now. Otherwise, we're just kicking off a TRICOM meeting till like June, where we say, okay, well, we passed the FY twenty budget, let's talk about how we want to change the process for next year and what we can do differently, but it seems to me we just keep doing that year after year, we're, you know.
Well, we've never, I've been here a long time, we've never done that, we've always, we've always created the budget, and FinCom reviews the budget and makes a recommendation, their job is to review it, not to create it. And I think we're, you know, and, and it worked for many, many years, so I don't know why we're pulling them into that, maybe they want to be here, maybe they don't. They're certainly willing to participate as individuals, and we know, anybody can come here and, and speak, you know, you know, speak on the budget or anything else that we're talking about, but I just don't see, I just think it confuses things, you know, and communication is good, but I just think we need to provide them with, it's our responsibility to provide. communication is good, but I just think we need to provide them with, it's our responsibility to provide them with a budget, I think we need to do that and then they're gonna do their due diligence for the community and with the department heads. If the school committee wants to come in and if, you know, make a case why they need more money, then we can have that discussion.
Okay, so just say I'm a layman on this side, never done one of these before. So I watch the school committee meetings, I see their justification, why they want five point four seven, I understand Tim's budget and the balance of it and how four point five isn't the only thing that's gonna do to make it work. So if I see in that five hundred thousand, that's the delta, I see value in that now. The only thing that I can do is either go to Tim and say, no, cut more and provide more funding here. Don't fill Rachel Benson's position, I want that for a curriculum coordinator on the other side, are you happy with me giving you that information or do you want?
Well, you're not gonna say that anyways, but I mean, it's, you know, what about the police department, that's, you know, Tim had to cut money out of their, well, maybe not the police department, but what about another?
Police budget request.
So, so, so he got, so, so, right, so Norm's budget got cut, the chief's budget got cut, I don't see anybody here worried about that.
I'm worried about that.
What are you talking about?
Well, we don't talk about those things, we talk about one department. Well, if Norm had to come in, if the chief had to come in, if, you know, if Tim was cutting three officers out of his, out of his budget.
Yeah, but he's not.
But that's not the government set up, the school, we represent that side and the school department represents that side of the budget, that's the way Massachusetts has it set up.
That, I kind of disagree with that because the school committee, we cut the check, the school committee does what they do, that's interior to our budget.
Right.
It just has more public oversight than the assessor's office, you know, to some degree. But the school committee has their requests and it comes to us and it's more than what we can provide on a revenue side. The question is instantly, okay, do we agree with you? We're not really in a position to say we don't agree with you, they're the ones that are the experts in this, and if they say they need these type of things, then we should have the debate of whether or not we want to go out and ask the people for more money for it.
Every department could come in here and say, we need, you know.
Yeah, but the assessor's office has no.
Make the case that, hey, I need two more officers, you know, he could come in and make that case. So every department could say, hey, we need more staffing at the senior center, we more, you know, DPW, I looked at all the new parks and roads that have been created over the last twenty years. That department has gone down in person.
Craig, I think that's why we're, that's why they all want to meet too. And if they did, if Graybo and all those people came in, I think we'd all have to ask the same question that we're gonna ask on the thirtieth is, do we say yes or do we say, no, sorry, we can't afford it? And I think that's where we're at right now. And so I think it's very important to maybe sit down with them and hear this one out, you know, and and see if, as a town, do we want to make this decision, do we want to, do we want to fund that delta? Do we want to see what else in town are we, are we missing out on? Are there services or funding that needs to happen? And take a look at it, and if we don't, I mean, if we all collectively look at it and say, you know what? We can make way, make do with four and a half percent, let's, let's ride this one out one more year, let's see what happens next year, let's see where we're at, you know, I think.
Well, the thing that we have to look at too is, is we're, we're gonna be taking on a lot more debt.
Right.
So taxes, taxes are gonna go up without any, we're not even talking about it override, so.
And that's where I am, I'd rather have a good conversation with the school committee, I just worry about that many people in a room that you're able to have a good conversation. And so I'd rather have a good conversation with school committee. In my opinion, they're the ones that if they feel like we need an override, they need to make the case. Because they know their budget, they, and if they start, once they make that case to us, then we do the TRICOM meetings, I just, I just worry about too many. You can't, you lose productivity sometimes.
The other, the other thing is, when you have all the, you know, you have three very important committees and boards in here. I think, you know, we're the policymakers and having them on board, if we make a decision one way or the other, I think sends a clear-cut message to the rest of the town.
Yep.
And I think, I think it's very helpful in that sense because we are the leaders and everyone's gonna take their cues from us. And if we're all on board, all three boards, if we say, we're all going right, you know, if someone says, no, they should have gone left, well, it's like, well, look at all three boards, they're going right.
I just don't think we have that information though, I think it's so, there's no way I could support an override now because we don't have any information.
And, so, what if we don't get that consensus, I mean, we're allowing, and this is nothing against, it could be anybody on the finance committee, okay, I have nothing against any of them. But you're allowing a board that reviews their, they make a recommendation right to town meeting and you're having, you're putting them in part, you're putting them in the process of creating the budget. That's not what their job is.
That's not true.
It is true.
That is.
We give them a budget and then they vet the department.
If finance committee makes a recommendation that's adverse to this board's recommendation, they can put that to the voters just like anybody else.
Yeah, and nothing for nothing, Greg.
Right, but that's not creating the budget.
He spent far more time with the budget than any of us.
That's not creating the budget, that's making a recommendation and changing the budget, and then, anybody could do that at town meeting. People could put a hold on the budget at town meeting.
Why does it have to be this power thing where it's one or the other?
It's not a power thing.
We work in concert with them and they want to come in and talk to us about where the budget's going.
Do they want to come in, does the finance committee want to come in?
Yes.
We have clear, well, I haven't talked to anybody about it, but there are clear lines on how our budget is created and how it's reviewed and the recommendations that are made at town meeting, it's not about creating the budget, if you want the finance committee to create the budget, we don't need Tim. That's his job, that's, it's his budget.
Tim runs the day-to-day operations of this facility and in conjunction with Tim, the finance committee goes and meets with each department head and spends, Bruce is right, way more time going over the budget than this board does. So it's important to have them on board.
That's what their job is, to read into the budget.
If not functionally, then at least politically.
If you're bringing them in for a TRICOM meeting, you're bringing them as a resource for people who have an immersed knowledge in the actual budget. When we did this the last time, there, there was a contribution, I know because I was on FinCom at the time and part of the TRICOM association. And not only was it first, like Sargon mentioned, to let everybody know that all three of the people who are involved in this were all working together on a solution to that particular problem that particular year. From my perspective on FinCom at the time is, we brought a wealth of knowledge on the, on the budget, because you saw every piece of it. So all those little things, like if you knew that the road study was there, which was an integral part of it, and that's the municipal side. Or if there was a demand or a need for, you know, something in Tim's budget that need, he felt was, needed to be addressed or the department had needed to be addressed, it could be brought out in that TRICOM meeting because somebody had picked it up and looked at it at some time from the public sphere.
And the other part of it too is, we can also, you know, have strict ground rules for the meeting. You know, and that way we can speed this thing along and if there's certain things that we want to get, at certain points that we, as a board, want to put across, we can have the school committee come in, have Jay do his presentation, what does five point four seven look like? What does four point five look like? Where are we, where are we as a town? How do we feel about this? Do we all feel comfortable? Obviously, the school's gonna fight for what they want, right? They're all gonna say that they, you know, they don't want five point four seven, they want, you know, twenty percent, whatever, give me, give me all the money, because I'm sure they could spend it, right? But for us as a board, we need to look at it and say, does this make sense for our town? I don't think, I don't think it hurts to have that discussion, I think, I think we have to have that discussion, especially with where we, where we see our budget in the next five years.
If the school department wants to do that presentation, I'm all in. I don't see the finance committee's role in the school department talking to us about their, about their budget needs for next year.
Just from a logistics perspective.
I don't get it, it's a, we need to figure it out with them, with the school department, it's our discussion to have. You guys, if the majority of you guys want finance committee there, that's fine, I just think it confuses things and the lines get gray about whose responsibility is what, but if you guys think there's a value to have them there, you know, have them there, I don't. Well, I don't think it's a good idea, but.
I just want to be consistent because three months ago, I promised Bruce, I had said it at the time, I said, we need more information. And then we should all meet again and really talk about the future of this town and our, our school budget and our regular budget. Where we want to see, do we want to, do we want to spend more money or do we want to be level? And I just, sitting on this board, that's our, one of the things that we're tasked to do. And so that's the only thing, but again, if, however we get there, I don't mind, I just want to make sure that we're doing it the right way.
Well, I want to make sure that we get all the information before the meeting, I don't want to be getting information that night. If they have real, you know, if they are gonna make an argument for getting more money out of how we're gonna do it, I don't know, but, you know, I want, I want that information upfront, they need to provide that. You know, at least, you know, several days before we meet with them.
I'm gonna let them know and I'll write, you know, make sure that we have all of that and then I'll even ask too, I'll just say, hey, if you can meet on the, you know, I mean, how does the rest of this board feel? I don't want to.
They want, they want to see us, I guess.
Yeah, I, alright, I would prefer, thirtieth is a good date, if there's a day we can pick where we can all be there, I just prefer that. It's a month out, so it shouldn't be that hard to.
Why not have them come to our meeting on the twenty second?
And dedicate our meeting, because this is gonna be.
Uh, there's a reason.
Is this gonna be a long meeting?
Yeah, because Tim's given us his budget, I think, presentation that night and by charter, I think he has to give it to us first before we can start talking about it to anybody else.
Yeah, twenty second, that's happened, yeah, and they have the study that night too for the five.
So we have a big meeting on the twenty second. And so then the meeting after is the twenty ninth, which we don't have a meeting scheduled.
Not scheduled, no.
And so they want to do it on the thirtieth where all members can meet. You know, unless we tell them, hey, you know, come down on the twenty ninth and we want to do it that day and see if they can do it, I mean, I don't know, are we mucking up the waters?
We're here for ten, we haven't even, we haven't met in months, I'm okay with a couple of extra hours of time, we gotta go through the motions anyways. Like I said, I kind of wanted to do this a long time ago, so, because this is when you get into crunch time.
But this is why I wanted to wait too, is because now we're gonna have more information at our hands.
You're pretty much in the same spot.
Well, we didn't know exactly what is what, I mean, you could, you could estimate, but now we have the actual numbers.
You knew you were gonna be right about there.
Well, they didn't say anything then that they were here, they had zero numbers, so.
They're always afraid to give you, I mean, there is a catch twenty-two sometimes coming in here and I felt that not being on this board, you come in with a proposal and an idea and you say, where are your numbers? And then you come in with the numbers and you say, well, why are you springing these numbers on us all of a sudden, so, you know, they're in a tough spot. I, I know, you know, Sargon's right, if you gave them, they would spend all the money, easily could, and it's not their fault, like.
No, no, I mean.
So, but, you know, it's been over five and a quarter, it's been around five and a quarter for the past few years and I'm not surprised it's five four seven, that's just. And I saw their proposal and to read through in a vacuum makes sense, there's nothing they're asking for that is outrageous.
Nope.
But it's just more than we've got, so someone's gonna give.
But if you've seen their proposal, we should see their proposal, I mean, so.
I just saw it watching it.
Yeah, you just watched the meeting.
I just watched a meeting.
So I think, I think we should have the meeting, we'll have it on the thirtieth, is there any objection? I mean, personally, I kind of do agree with Craig in the sense that, again, this might be being petty, but I think it should be down here, I think it should be our meeting, but.
As long as it can be televised easily and can see.
I mean, Peter wanted it upstairs because he, you know, he said he wanted it, because it's a bigger room. To which I said, I don't know how much of an audience we can have, but at the same time, too. I don't know.
I like this one for TV.
I do too.
Yeah, that room can go live.
Because their meetings aren't live though, are they?
No, that's it.
Yeah, because I think you could only go with one live from, right, was another thing?
Yeah, yeah, we go.
That's why we go live.
They used to meet on Mondays, I don't know why.
Oh, you have an education channel, so you could do both.
Okay.
Because they used, that was unplanned, but it was the same night, you know.
Well, I, I still think, I mean, I'm happy to meet within the thirtieth, it's fine. I just, again, I'd rather have a productive conversation with the school committee instead of adding all those people, and if we go in the direction of override, then we do it. But that's just my opinion and if the rest of the board wants to do something different, that's fine.
I think the only, I think, the only reason I hesitate with that is because I think we're gonna end up there regardless. And I don't necessarily think that, I think just because I got also a request from them, they were part of that chain, it was three months ago, we all had that one meeting together, we said we're gonna meet again. I felt like the first meeting we had was productive. I don't know about the rest of you, but I felt like we were doing very well and we got to a certain spot, maybe it didn't move as fast as Bruce had wanted, but I felt like the meeting was good and I think, I don't see it being too, too crazy, I think we have a very strict agenda and we moderate the meeting correctly, I think it can go, we can have a very productive meeting.
What's gonna be on the agenda besides their, you know, I mean, about the, besides the school budget?
I think the first thing would be the school budget, their presentation and then what that, what they're looking for in the five point four seven. I think we, we look at what is, where does four and a half get them? And, and how do we feel about that? And then, you know, is everyone okay with that? And if everyone sits around and we all say, yeah, that's fine, whatever, and then we could also take a look at the rest of Tim's budget too. Say, how do we feel about, what are we missing out on in, on his budget? What could he get that he's, that he's cutting out of there? That's crucial to this town, and say, is there an opportunity here? And if we all agree that there, there isn't, then there isn't. And if we all agree that there is something that we can do, then maybe there is.
And then you want to look at what the cost is, right? Just tell them the numbers, I can tell you what the cost is.
At the end of the day, that's what it's all about, because then if we all look at each other and say, oh, this is gonna cost everyone X and we think that number is insane, then we're not gonna do it, I mean, or I won't, I won't, you know, support it, but if, look at the number, it's okay and we, I mean, what did Paul say earlier today, he drove me crazy? So that, that bridge on the culvert on Stow Road was eighty-two thousand dollars or something, two thousand?
So, is this a regular meeting for them? The thirtieth, or is this just a random night? Because it's a Wednesday.
Yeah, it's a random night.
So why don't, so we could have, we could host the meeting.
Yeah, you could.
Yeah, yeah, that was just his, his proposal, I didn't, I didn't say yes or no to anything.
It should be a board of selection meeting, it shouldn't be, I mean, it's just weird to, we're gonna go to them so they can ask.
We all agreed to meet, have a meeting, just need to figure out who's gonna host.
Yeah, it's just weird, you know.
The thirtieth is open for me, Sargon, just deal with it with the other chairs.
So we'll figure it out, we'll, we'll, I'm gonna push the meet over here downstairs, it'll be our meeting on the thirtieth.
I really like my spot right here.
Exactly, I like, I like sitting right here too. So, okay, so that's what we'll do then, and then and I will, after I speak to Peter and Sue, I'll get back to you guys and confirm on the thirtieth. Good.
What time do they stop serving food at reunion?
Nine o'clock now on Tuesdays.
Oh, Sargon.
You got a key?
We can add a couple of pretzels.
We stopped an hour earlier because of the winter, winter hours.
You got a motion to adjourn, spend a second.
Motion made a second, all those in favor?
Aye.